Mayor Pro Tem, will you pound the gavel? We are called to order. And I'll call upon Mayor Pro Tem Dot Miller at this time for a moment of reflection and the pledge.
Thank you, Your Honor. Would you please join me in a moment of silent reflection? And now if you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Kristen Rush, if you'll do the roll call.
Mayor Williams?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Miller?
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer?
Here.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Councilmember Marriott?
Here.
Councilmember Simpson?
Here.
Next, we have the approval of the minutes of July 20th. Are there any changes or corrections? Ms. Miller, are there any lights lit?
No, Your Honor.
The minutes will stand approved as presented. Next, we have a mid-year financial update. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We're going to have Director of Finance Brian Archer present this item. He is on his way into the chambers right now.
He's used to being last on the agenda, and this time he's first.
Well, Mr. Archer, glad you could join us?
You know, it takes a long time to get across the street. Sorry about that.
No problem.
So, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council, thank you for the opportunity to let me come talk about the second quarter financials. Next slide, please. So, the last time we met and discussed, the city was in the midst of the longest expansionary period in history. Unfortunately, that ended in March, so that period lasted 128 months. If you add that up, that's a little more than 10 and 1/2 years, a pretty long period of time. We are now officially in a recession. When we discussed last time, we said that that would be declared after the fact, and it was. And so now, we have to figure out how long the recession will last. Most recessions last anywhere from nine to 12 months. This time may be different. It may be longer. It may be shorter. We will see. For the second quarter, sales tax and building revenues are all trending positive. Other revenues are trending negative, and we'll talk a little bit more about that here in a bit. Expenditures are in line with the budget, and the story continues to be large capital projects. We did add another one to the list, 68th and 72nd Avenue Wadsworth Turn lanes. That project was sped up with the onset of the COVID-19. We were able to get a little bit more work done there with the reduction of the number of traffic, the number of people in the traffic. And so that is, that is good news. Hopefully, that project will be done sooner than later. And then ultimately, since the last time, we did receive some CARES Act funding. The city received a little more than $9.4 million from Jeff Cohen Adams, and we're working on getting those dollars out into the community and getting them put to work. Next slide, please. We like to start each one of these presentations with a little bit review of our performance. So what you will see on the screen right now is the general fund, fund balance. City council has a requirement that we maintain a 17% reserve. Today, we're sitting at approximately 42%. The reserve is required to be in the current year and throughout the 10-year model, so what you see is only the current year. When we present the budget later on this fall, we will show you what that reserve looks like in each of the years and in the final year. Right now, we do cover that required reserve in every year, including the final year. Next slide. What you will see on this slide is the city council result under the vibrant community and neighborhoods work system. So this shows, Councilmember Pfeiffer, the golden thread, where we have the city council strategic result, we have the milestones, and then we have a couple of the city's performance measures that support the milestones and then ultimately that result. Next slide. This is one under the community and economic development work system. Same flow, council result, council strategic result, milestones, and then our performance measures below. Next slide. We'll now dive in a little bit to our general fund on the revenue side. So you can see, a little more colorful than prior years. Certainly, as we mentioned before, property tax and sales tax are positive, trending above their budget for 2020. Auto-use tax is negative, but we have a monitor light on because we were expecting a pullback. General use tax and court revenues are negative because they are below our expected reductions in our budget. Building activity continues to do well. We're currently sitting at 77% for the year. Interest revenue has slowed down significantly, with the Federal Reserve cutting interest rates to a zero to .25. That means with our, with how restrictive our investment policies are, we're unable to take advantage of any other investment opportunities.
Can I ask you a question, Mr. Archer?
Sure, absolutely.
With the, on the interest revenue general fund item, with the talk in the world today of negative interest rates or costing to have your money held somewhere, is that a prospect that we actually face with our funds?
Well...
I mean, we've never had that, but is that, we're getting so close to zero...
Yeah.
There's only one way it can kind of go.
Hopefully not. We're able to invest in so many different pools, investment pools, that I think we can avoid negative interest.
Thank you.
And on the expenditure side, we're doing a wonderful job making sure we stay within our budget. The CARES Act certainly is helping with that, and our dedication and leadership is keeping these budget lines in order. Next slide. Let's dive a little bit deeper into sales tax. That's our largest revenue. It counts for approximately 70% of the overall revenue in the general fund. And you can see through the first five months, sales tax trails one month, that we are positive, up 2.7%. Our budget is 2.5%, so we are looking good so far. We are expected that number, expecting that number to be lower as we move throughout the year, but we're hopeful. You can see the larger categories of retail and wholesale are positive. Accommodations, utilities, other services, and real estate are negative. And again, down at the bottom, you will see construction trending positive. To give you an idea of how different this is compared to prior years, retail and wholesale are up 11 and 13% over the prior year. Accommodations and utilities are down 18 and 12%. And construction is up 19%. So you can see this is much like a roller coaster, up and down in various categories.
Mr. Archer, Councilmember Pfeiffer has a question.
Councilmember Pfeiffer, sorry.
Speaking of the roller coaster, I'd like to have you elaborate a little bit more on it because it seems like, I think it was on your previous screen, that building revenues are positive. So maybe can you elaborate on a few of these sales tax, like real estate and rental? What would qualify under real estate for sales tax? Like, give me an example.
So we charge tax on hotel rentals?
So a hotel?
So that would be an example, yeah.
So, okay.
Also on the people that choose to collect on Airbnb.
Okay. Which we'll talk later. And then, and then utilities, it kind of threw me a little bit because of all the stay home happening. You would think that the utilities would go...
We're a little surprised with that one as well. It's actually completely opposite of where we thought it would be.
And what was the percentage on that? Do you know?
So on utilities, it's down 12%.
12%. And yet, we have a stay home, or there, for a large portion of this, there was, because this goes all the way till end of May-ish?
It goes through part of June, actually.
It does go into June?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. All right. I can see there's confusion of where you're going to land with a different...
We're certainly struggling with trying to use any kind of previous modeling that we have to make sense of this. And then when you compare this to the national averages, we're not even close in any of the categories. Some were doing much better, and some were behind, so...
Okay. Thank you.
Well, actually, if we go to the next two slides, we'll look at the same piece of information in a completely different way. So, next slide. So the NAICS codes is a national way to categorize retail, and so I apologize, it's a little hard to see on the screen, but basically, it's taking the same data and carving it up in a different format. It allows us to compare better to our peers and across the United States, and so this is a format we use and will be using moving forward. So if you remember, we started this last year. We wanted to wait to have two full years so we could do comparative data, and then we will use this starting in 2021 and beyond. And you can see at the top, we have supermarkets, grocery stores, hardware. Those items are doing very well. You will also notice electronic shopping and mail order doing quite well. And again, that is not only Amazon. We get that from many other retailers. And then you'll notice the category's not doing very well. Of course, our restaurants, with the reduced capacity and the challenges that they need to meet to even be open. And then ultimately, cable and other subscription programming, and then you'll see four covering down at the bottom. These are in order from a revenue perspective, so it is good that our top four categories are all up, and it certainly helps to cover the categories that are reduced.
Mr. Archer, just real quick, does the cable and other subscription programming include online, such as Netflix, Disney Plus?
Yes, it does.
Interesting to see that down.
We were shocked as well. Though, a lot of people are reducing cable-only service, and so that net effect we're feeling like is causing that. And we are seeing that in our franchise fees as well. And then if we go to the next slide, it's a graphical representation of the same piece of data. And again, if you look at our five largest categories on this line, which would be supermarkets, merchants, hardware stores, electronic shopping, and power, that is about 75% of the sales tax that is generated on an annual basis. Next slide, please. Graphical look at auto-use, the one that I said earlier, that is down, but we were expecting a reduction. You can see that we're down about 12%. Dollars-wise, that amounts to a little over $350,000. And so we're hoping that that stabilizes there, but that number has been going down every month. We started out the year gangbusters and have slowed down since. We do know that the manufacturers are pushing out 0% for 72 months and 84 months and trying to get more people to purchase, but we think this may slow down for the next couple of years. Next slide. Same representation on court revenue. Difficult because our courts were closed for many months, and now they're trying to catch up. So we do feel this number will return, but you can see it is down approximately 29%. On a dollar figure, I wrote this down, but I don't have it in front of me, you can see that that court revenue, I think, if I remember right, is down about $160,000. Next slide. If we take a look at all of our other funds that are required by city council to have fund balances, you will notice that we do show a lot of green. The funds are being resilient right now. We do have a monitor on the expenditures on the community development line item, but we feel very confident that by the end of the year, that will return back to a positive. And that really relates to some salary and wages overfills that we needed to do as we replaced a 42-year manager. Kept him on to try to get some of that knowledge transfer in the last three months, and so that will return to positive by the end of the year. We've talked a lot about golf and hospitality. Again, the hospitality side is at the Arvada events. That has been closed since March the 16th. They've been unable to run any kind of event, so certainly, that is going to have a negative effect. The golf course is certainly a tale of two different businesses right now. Golf is doing quite well. Rounds are up significantly, in some cases, up over 30% at Westwoods, up over 5% at Lake Arbor. But the restaurant faces the same challenges as any restaurant in Arvada or in the United States. Very limited menu, cannot sell alcohol out of the place, and so when you go to play golf, you really are, only have the opportunity to buy off of the beverage cart. We're hoping, as the year moves on, that the golf revenues stay up and that the restaurant can continue to provide at least a limited menu. All other funds, like I said before, are in the positive. One of the things we are seeing, Councilmember Pfeiffer, is we are selling a lot of water. So people are watering their yard, watering their lawns, watering their trees. So maybe they're turning the air conditioning off and turning the hose on. We're not sure. Next slide. Quick look at our investments. As we stated, this number has a monitor on it. We certainly are doing better than our benchmark. Our benchmark is calculated every single month, and it is an average, and so it will drop faster than our investments because we were able to lock in investments for a longer period of time. So we may be returning to 2 and 1/2% on an investment where the benchmark recalculates every month. When we have to sell, or when those investments come due and we have to go back out into the market, we will be investing below the benchmark. So while we look very good today, that number will continue to go down, and in the future, we will be below our benchmark. We have gotten more conservative in trying to protect dollars. We feel very comfortable, again, with our requirement of safety, liquidity, and then return, and in that order. And so we make sure that our investments, that every dollar we put in, we get a minimum of a dollar back. So Councilmember Marriott, we're hoping, we feel pretty confident that we will not have to be in a negative interest rate environment. Some pretty large changes in the corporate and agency world, where we did, we were able to add additional value there, and we will continue to look and see if we can add value as we move forward. But again, now we're talking about 5 and 10 basis points, where before, we were talking about maybe 50 to 100 basis points. The outlook is not great. Next slide. So that completes the presentation. I did want to mention that this is available online, so if anybody would like to download it, they certainly can. If you would like a paper copy, let us know, and we'll get you one. With that, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I don't see any lights lit up.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Archer, for your presentation. Certainly, some of those numbers are much more encouraging than what we're seeing in other local communities, so hang in there.
Thank you, and I apologize for being late.
Oh, not an issue. Next, we have public comment on issues not scheduled on the agenda. Looks like we've got two individuals who have signed up for that. Let me get to that. The first is Amy. And Amy, I apologize, Ms. Miller is sending these over to me, but I'm not able to enlarge them large enough to be able to read your last name. So if you'll come down, state your name and make your comments.
That's okay. Thank you, Mayor. It's Amy Travon, again. Hello. Good evening. I'm here to say once again that black lives matter, just so that we are all keeping it on our minds. And I'm here to talk about a couple of things tonight. One is how we're going to make change internally and how we're going to make change here in the city. I'm hoping that all of us are still doing the internal work that is necessary for a community to make change, for all of us to make sure that everybody here in Arvada feels welcome, and that we are a community that wants a diverse community and a community that wants all voices to be heard, and for all voices to feel safe, not just ourselves. So the other thing I wanted to talk about was what our group is doing here in Arvada. The Arvadans for Social Justice is our group. We changed the name to better reflect what we thought what we were going to be doing for the community. We are on track to interview our over 300 members at this point to find out what they are wanting to do and what they feel like will make change in this community. So when people ask what we want to do, we don't know yet because we want to hear from everybody who lives here in Arvada. Some of the things that we are talking about are how we can welcome more, more businesses that will be a more diverse reflection of the community here in Colorado, as well as here in Arvada, how we can make change here within the city, if there are things that we can work on with the employees themselves, and what the employees have already been doing with their diversity committee. We would love to know. We would love to work together on that. We've been talking about changes in the education system. Obviously, that's not here specifically in the city, but obviously as well, the city police department is involved in our education system, and we'd like to be able to make changes there as well. I noticed also on the agenda tonight, there's something about the city courts. I've said it before, and I'll say it again, I don't think we should be prosecuting children, and I don't think this city should be involved in that in any way. There are a lot better choices out there than prosecuting children, especially when those prosecutions are negatively impacting our children of color here in Arvada, I think, and I hope that you all have read those reports from the state. I call it the clear report. I'm not sure what you all call it in your line of work, but it shows that while our children here in the state of, in the county of Jefferson and Gilpin, the First Judicial District, that our children of color only make up, you know, 3% of the population, 13% of them are prosecuted. That's a problem. We need to change that, and that can happen right here in our city. So again, I'm going to ask you a look at that. Other than that, and I only have 13 seconds left, I appreciate you listening to me, and I'll be back. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Nancy Felix.
Hello. I am Nancy Felix. I'm also part of the Arvadans for Social Justice, and I wanted to talk tonight about our elections. With 91 days left till we vote in November, I feel like our elections are at risk, and we really need to be vigilant on how we move forward. We, there are those in leadership who are currently, for whatever reason, trying to cast doubt on our elections and the way we vote by doing various things. For example, tweeting about mail-in voting, rigged elections, saying that the elections would be litigated, challenging the results of the elections, challenging bills which are introduced to expand mail-in voting, suggesting that the elections may be rigged. And I believe that we in Colorado, we are the role model for mail-in voting, and we do it so well, and we should continue to strive for that because we don't want people to start thinking that and start doubting the election process. We stood here, and we pledged allegiance to the flag. We did not pledge allegiance to a particular person, and I think it's important that we stay vigilant. I think it's important that we continue to strive to make sure that every vote counts, regardless of whom you're voting for. So we already know that the intelligence committees have told us that Russia is again meddling in our elections, and we know they want to sow chaos in the United States because we know they want to control Eastern Europe. So what I will ask this committee to do is think about the top 10 reasons why the way we vote, mail-in voting, which is, by the way, the same as any other, if you put it in the mail, it's mail-in voting, is important, right? So we are in the middle of a pandemic, so it would be nice and necessary for people to not congregate. And, and as you can see, I think, in some other states, like in Atlanta, there were hours and hours and hours of waiting. So it, we are in the pandemic. It makes voting easier. There are no long lines. We can increase early voting. We have a higher voter turnout. We don't have to take time off for work. We reduce voter suppression and intimidation. We save the state money, and we reduce the risk of hacking. So I am here to encourage us and everybody to continue to please ensure that our elections are not at risk and that we can vote appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Felix. I don't have any other sign-up sheets for public comment at this time. Ms. Rush, is there anybody else that wishes to make public comment at this time, either by Zoom, by telephone, or in council chambers?
There is none.
Thank you so much. Next, we'll move on to new business. We have one consent agenda item, which is R 2006-4, which is a resolution authorizing a grant between the city of Arvada and the U.S. Department of Justice, COPS Office, COPS Hiring Program, CHP, to provide grant funding to the city in the amount of $500,000 for the Arvada Police Department. Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move the resolution R 20-06-4 be approved.
Motion for approval. If all council will cast their votes...
Your Honor, everybody has voted. Do you want to cast your vote before I display the votes?
Thank you. I will vote yes on the consent agenda.
And that passes 7 to 0.
Thank you. We have no resolutions or first readings tonight, so we won't get to hear Ms. Miller go through a very entertaining reading of the first readings. So we will at this time. Ms. Miller, if you will gavel us to open the public hearing, open the public hearing on Council Bill 20-018, an ordinance authorizing the Second Amendment to the 2020 operating and capital budget in the amount of $1,500,000, and authorizing an intergovernmental agreement by and between the state of Colorado, acting by and through the Department of Transportation, and the city of Arvada pertaining to the Alkire Street side path, 78th Avenue to 80th Avenue, to complete the trail and sidewalk network on the west side of Alkire Street between West 72nd Avenue and West 80th Avenue. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this project, which, as we said, has federal funding that is involved through the State Department of Transportation, through CDOT. We have CDOT's cooperation in this, in this project. This completes the side path that's on the west side of Alkire Street that connects the last segment between West 72nd and West 80th Avenue. This is something that we've been working on for about the last three or four years, and this, this connection will help improve pedestrian access to Van Arsdale Elementary School. This is an area where there has been a lack of a sidewalk on Alkire Street, and as a result of community participation, community input, also some in response to some incidents that have occurred in that area that have put pedestrians and motorists and also equestrians at risk, we started looking at alternatives to improve the side path, looked at grant opportunities, and identified this opportunity that's before you tonight in collaboration with CDOT. So we are definitely recommending approval of the ordinance as presented.
Thank you. Is there any member of the public that would like to testify on this issue?
I don't see any.
Thank you. I'll close the public comment portion. Open it up for city council questions or actions.
All right, Your Honor. I have council members Ford and Marriott wishing to speak.
Ms. Ford?
I'd like to reserve the motion.
Okay. Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a question for Mr. Devon or for the appropriate staff member. And I, from reading this, this is a million and a half dollar project that we're going to, we're authorizing the expenditure of, and then we will get $1.2 million back, I believe, in the form of a TAP grant. And my question just is, how long does it take for those grant funds to be returned to the city? Is it at the conclusion of the project or when? And then where exactly, where do these funds come out of, and then where do those funds get returned to? So just kind of a timeframe of, we outlay the money, then when, when does the grant come in, and where does it come from, where does it go to?
You know, I don't have an exact timeframe on the reimbursement. I can tell you, though, it's within a few months, and it comes out of our capital fund, so it doesn't hurt any of the operating funds, and we have enough float in there to be able to accommodate something like this without any impact, unfavorable impact to the, to other capital projects.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Ford?
I move that CB 20-018, an ordinance authorizing the Second Amendment to the 2020 operating and capital budget in the amount of 1.5 million, and authorizing an intergovernmental agreement by and between the State of Colorado, acting by and through the Department of Transportation, and the City of Arvada pertaining to the Alkire Street side path, 78th Avenue to 80th Avenue, to complete the trail and sidewalk network on the west side of Alkire Street between West 72nd Avenue and West 80th Avenue. CDOT Project Number 23662 be approved on final reading numbered 4735 and ordered published by title only.
Mr. Jones, you wish to speak to the motion?
I do. Thank you. I just wanted to thank Mr. Devon and the entire city staff, everybody that was involved in this project, even the, the police and the fire department, because they were called to that area on at least one occasion. This is an important stretch of road that's been here for a long time, and as the neighborhoods have grown up around this particular road, it's, this is an important project. And so I just wanted to thank you for the work to keep this in motion and get this done, and it will be a great amenity for the children going north through Ralston Valley and the children going south to Van Arsdale. So I will be supporting this and appreciate the work that's been done.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. If council will vote?
Your Honor, all votes have been cast. If you'd like to cast your vote before we display them.
I will vote yes on the motion.
The motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Miller, if you will gavel to open council, the public hearing on Council Bill 20019, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Section 58-72, Presiding Judge, and repealing Section 58-72.5, Clerk of the Court of Article III, Municipal Judges of Chapter 58, Municipal Court of the Arvada City Code. Mr. Devon or Ms. Morris is going to handle this?
Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll go ahead and start. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this ordinance, which the city attorney's office was collaborative in drafting for your consideration tonight, reverses the, the reporting relationship between the presiding municipal court judge and the court administrator, back to what it was formerly, with the court administrator reporting to the presiding municipal court judge. This was something that came out of your study of, of the municipal court earlier, actually in, in 2019, and after your consideration of the results of that study and further discussion, you directed that we put this item on the agenda to have you consider tonight, and it's timely because we're actually in the process right now of selecting a new municipal court administrator. And then after we get that selection, then I believe you will all embark on the selection process for presiding municipal court judge. So this is a real timely action for you to consider tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Devon. Ms. Rush, is there any member of the public that would like to address city council on this topic?
There is not.
Thank you. I'll close the public comment portion. Open it up for city council questions or action.
Have council members Marriott and Pfeiffer wish to speak?
Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, I was just going to make a motion, but I will be happy to defer to Mr. Pfeffer.
Mr. Pfeffer?
All right. I was going to defer to you if you were going to do it, but. I move that Council Bill 20-019, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Section 58-72, Presiding Judge, and repealing Section 58-72.5, Clerk of the Court of Article III, Municipal Judges of Chapter 58, Municipal Court of the Arvada City Code, be approved on final reading number 4736 and ordered published by title only.
Motion for approval? Council will please vote.
All votes have been cast. If you'd like to cast your vote, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. I will vote in support of the ordinance.
That passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, uh... Ms. Miller, if you will gavel to open the public hearing on Council Bill 20-020, an ordinance amending Chapter 98, taxation by amending subsection 98-66, print 1E, and section 98-243, amending Chapter 11 of the Land Development Code, measurements, rules of construction, and definitions, by amending section 11-3-3 definitions, and adding a new subsection, subsection 3-1-5-3 to the Land Development Code, Chapter 3, Use Regulations of the Arvada City Code, to allow for the licensing and taxation of short-term rental of a dwelling, dwelling unit, or accessory dwelling unit residential. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we will have Planning Manager Rob Smetana present this item.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. We are here to, to continue our conversation regarding short-term rentals. As you know, we talked about this last fall, and then at a recent workshop in May of this year. So I'll quickly run through the ordinance as it's drafted with a couple of modifications that were made based on our conversations in May. Next slide, please. So this ordinance would allow for the short-term rentals of, as a, within an entire house, within a unit, or within individual rooms, in single-family detached dwellings or ADUs, duplexes, townhomes, multifamily condominium buildings, and apartment buildings. And there's one condition on that that I'll get to here shortly. There would be a requirement for one additional parking space for the short-term rental associated with any of the properties, and a short-term rental could only be rented to one party at a time. Uh, next slide, please. So for limit on the short-term rental per property, an example we put here is that if you have a primary residence and an ADU, only one or the other could be used for the short-term rental. Renters in, in single-family detached duplex and townhome condominium, townhomes or condominiums would be allowed to rent out, to short-term renters with the written permission of the owner. For multifamily apartment buildings, only the property owner could operate a short-term rental, and they would only be allowed to operate one per property. And in those situations in an apartment building, the renters would not be allowed to operate a short-term rental. And in any instance, the short-term rentals would be subject to homeowner association regulations. So if an HOA did not allow short-term rentals, we would not permit a short-term rental. Next slide, please. There are some other responsibilities in the ordinance, that's, that they be available to respond to complaints within, within one hour, seven days a week, and that they provide a brochure in the unit with contact information for their, their clients. There also needs to be someone who can get to the short-term rental if necessary, and that person needs to be authorized to make emergency decisions. Uh, next slide, please. In terms of the license requirements, again, it must be a property owner or renter with authorization. They need to identify which portion of the dwelling unit or property will be used for the short-term rental. They need to show that they can meet the parking requirement. They'll need to self-certify that they meet all the applicable codes and safety standards. They'll obviously need to pay the city's lodgers tax. And here are the couple of changes that we made based on the May workshop. Then an applicant can operate no more than three individual properties as short-term rentals within the city at any one time. And that came up in the, the situation where folks talked about, if there was a couple that got married in the city and they had a couple of properties between them, they moved in together, and they had an extra property, that they would be able to use that as a short-term rental in that situation. And then we would limit the number of days that a, a unit may be available for short-term rentals, and the number of 240 days was something that was discussed during that workshop. So that's the number we put in the ordinance. Next slide, please. And then a couple of last minute, or last items. A license would not be transferable, so it would terminate on the sale of the property, and the new owner would then have to come in and apply for their own short-term rental license if they would like to continue on with that. Violations can result in fines, and there's penalties listed in the ordinance, and a permit can be revoked if the director feels it is necessary based on those violations. Next slide, please. The Planning Commission did review the proposed ordinance at their July 7 meeting, and they did recommend approval of the ordinance. Uh, next slide, please. And we have a few of us here on staff to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. We've got at least one person signed up. Julie Gleason indicated she does not support the measure, but did not wish to, to speak, but wanted her name put into the record. Ms. Rush, do we have anyone else, either in person, by Zoom, or by telephone, that wishes to testify regarding this item?
We have one person here, I believe.
Yeah, Judy Straspo had signed up to speak.
Thank you.
That's for Cherrywood. It says, does not wish to speak.
I originally decided I wasn't going to speak, and now I have the opportunity to, so I have a statement.
This is on this topic, ma'am?
During my 35 years...
Short-term rentals?
Pardon me?
This is on the short-term rental issue?
Yes.
Okay. Please, you may proceed.
During my 35 years of residency in Arvada, I've watched as my beautiful, well-kept community slowly moves into decline. I attribute this decline in great part to the city's passive approach to ordinance violation identification and enforcement. The only protection afforded residential communities that have no homeowners' associations or property covenants. Lamar Heights in east Arvada is currently riddled with rentals having absentee landlords. The occupants often believe it is acceptable to use their front yards to park vehicles, motorhomes, trailers, boats, ATVs, and vehicles in various states of disrepair, using their driveways as used storage or temporary warehouses for family-owned businesses and excess storage, porches that are used as holding areas for discarded couches, appliances, automotive wheels, and tires. An increasing number of occupants no longer care for their properties, leaving yards filled with debris, overgrown foliage, weeds, and bushes that encroach on public sidewalk areas. Gardens and yards are left untended and unwatered, unattractive and dead. City easements and rights of way are overgrown with weeds and tree seedlings in need of mowing. Many homes and fences are in need of repair and paint. Without municipal ownership and active oversight of ordinance enforcement, the cascading effect of neglect will result in slums. The last thing we need is an invasion of short-term rentals, whose occupants will have no stake in our neighborhood. The city must take care of current residents before approving more areas requiring oversight. At the July 7 Planning Commission hearing, it was stressed that the proposed actions are to get a handle on a situation that already exists. That being the case, I strongly suggest that licensing fees collected from short-term rentals be allocated for establishing a proactive ordinance enforcement position, whose sole purpose would be to patrol Arvada. The intended purpose is violation education in the form of residential outreach by postal mail, but also giving the authority to issue tickets and fines for repeat violations. Thank you.
Thank you for your input on this topic. Anyone else signed up to speak or wishes to speak on this topic?
That's all we have.
Yeah, I'll close the public comment portion. Open it up for city council questions or action.
All right, we have council members Ford and Jones.
Ms. Ford?
So I have a couple of questions for Rob. Rob, in the ordinance, the residential ADUR, when I read this ordinance, that was the first time I saw that, so I was wondering if you could explain that. It mentions hotel, motel, apartment hotel, boarding, lodging or rooming house, motel, hotel, excuse me, motor hotel, guest house, guest ranch, mobile homes, auto camps, trailer courts, and parks under any concession, permit, right of access, license, or other agreement. So I, I was confused because I, when we were talking about short-term rentals, I thought we were talking about houses.
Uh, so we did include the ability to use an accessory dwelling unit as a short-term rental. So you may have your primary home and your accessory dwelling unit, and you could use either as a short-term rental. So that particular section was just, is in the taxation section of the ordinance of the municipal code, and it's just referencing the different types of properties that would have, would be taxed.
And do we have those right now, all of them?
Yeah, well, they're, they are all listed in the Land Development Code as, as permitted uses in various locations in the city and various zone districts.
Okay, and they're all currently taxed, in other words?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Excuse me. And then you mentioned that, um, in our previous conversation on short-term rentals, that, and I do recall that when we did talk about short-term rentals, we did talk about a house plus one, but it increased to three homes. So could you explain, please, how it increased to three homes?
There was certainly a lot of discussion during that workshop, and there were several numbers of units that were kind of put out there as, as options, and three was one that was put out there by, I believe, a couple of council members, and I do not remember then who said what exactly, but that was the number we put in based on the, the comments that we heard from the workshop.
Okay. I, I don't remember that, so I was curious. I remembered the house plus one. The three took me by surprise, to be honest with you. I wanted to ask you two, currently, what is the occupancy that we can have in homes now that would be allowed in a short-term rental?
Uh, well, if you're asking kind of what our definition of family is, that is...
Under E, under E six, where it talks about, um, the occupancy of a short-term rental shall not exceed the total number of unrelated persons that are otherwise permitted to occupy property in the city.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Yeah, we allow up to five unrelated people.
Okay. And under E nine, where it talks... And under E nine, where it talks about certifying that only 240 guests have been in that short-term rental, how would they do that? How would they certify that?
Uh, we anticipate that every year there would be some kind of legal document that we would have them sign and possibly get notarized stating that they met the requirements where they're required to self-certify.
And that would be notarized? You said possibly.
I believe we would want to go that direction so that it has more of a legal weight to it.
Okay. Under two, excuse me, under F, two A, Roman numeral two, it says, "The director shall not accept a new application from the same licensee for the same dwelling, dwelling unit or ADUR after revocation of a license unless the applicant demonstrates compliance with all licensing requirements." At what point would they be given that unless, you know, the ability? At what point would their application be accepted? In other words, at what point of them being able to demonstrate compliance would that be accepted? That's the question.
Uh, that might be one that I would like to refer to our legal staff regarding.
I think Ryan wants to chime in.
Or Ryan?
Legal can certainly chime in as well, but I think it could be as simple as, it depends on the nature of the violation. But if we, if we were aware that there was, say, a building code violation, that they were occupying a part of the house that it wasn't a bedroom and that they were able to mitigate that by doing the appropriate building updates that they needed to and that then could show that that was in compliance with the building codes, then that's something that we could consider within a year. So I think it's about the nature of the violation. We just didn't want to rule out the fact that you had to wait a year. If it was a relatively minor infraction that was able to be corrected, that they go through that process to correct it and then we could consider it again.
Okay, and then I just have a few more questions. Where, how do we know that there are approximately 300 rentals right now in the city operating illegally?
Uh, we have definitely looked at the sites that are out there, VRBO and Airbnb, just to kind of get a gauge. And, you know, it does change day to day, but that's the best estimate we have at this point, based on reviewing those websites.
And then my last question would be, how will we make sure that they're paying taxes?
Uh, I can help answer that. Um, so there's a couple of ways that, so number one is that we would ask for all of the businesses in the city, obviously, to be licensed. And so as a part of being licensed, we're able to check to make sure that they are sending in their sales tax license. So that's number one. But then the further component of that is, is everybody who's operating an Airbnb or a short-term rental getting licensed? And so there are third-party vendors that we are considering using that can go out and search those sites for us and tell us the addresses of the folks that are operating and they can identify who's taking reservations in the city. And so if we find that somebody is operating a short-term rental within the city and is not licensed with us, then we would be able to find or to follow a very similar process that we would follow if we found a business that was operating without a business license in the city, that our finance team would follow up with them and ask them to become compliant in the city and get them to issue a license and then we'll be able to require sales tax through that process.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Miller has indicated she would like to reserve the motion. Our next call upon Mr. Jones.
Thank you. Quick question, well, two, two questions and a comment. With regard to the residence and the ADU, through the application process, does that owner have to apply for both of those? Or do they, is it one application that designates the ADU as a potential short-term rental in addition to their house?
Yes, it would just be one application that we would get on one property.
Okay, no, that makes sense. And then the code enforcement, to the person who's spoken public comment, how, how do we envision code enforcement working? I'm assuming that it will fall under our police department from that perspective? Or is there something else that we're thinking about?
Sergeant Evans is with us tonight and he is our sergeant in charge of that department, so I'm going to let him answer that question.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's Sergeant Evans with the Code Enforcement Unit. Um, so I'll really address two different scenarios. The first scenario is if we identify a property that is operating illegally without the required permit and has been previously alluded to, that would follow a very similar process to what we currently do as far as any other business that's operating without a license, in which the finance department lets them know, hey, you're operating a business, you need a license. If they don't cooperate with the finance department, then the finance department reaches out to us and code enforcement steps in. And if they continue to be non-compliant, then we can issue a summons or citation, bringing them to court and mandating that they either stop their business operations or that they become compliant by getting the appropriate licenses. If we have a duly licensed business, in this case, a short-term rental, that is operating and it is not complying with any of the applicable codes, what code enforcement does once we become aware of the issue is we will open a case, assuming that the issue has been verified, open a case, send a warning letter to the property advising them of the violations and what they need to do to become compliant. We typically give them anywhere from two to four weeks, depending on how complex of an issue this may be to solve, and then we'll conduct a follow-up visit. If they have become compliant in that two to four week timeframe, then at that point, we'll document their compliance and we'll close the case. If they do not become compliant, we will continue to make follow-up visits until they either become compliant or it's obviously that they're not making any progress and we will issue a citation at that point. If we have to go out repeated times for multiple follow-up visits, we can also assess reinspection fees to just highlight the fact that, look, you're using city resources, you're not becoming compliant, and then those fees range anywhere from $100 to $300 and they're assessed through the finance department. If they don't pay those, then we can actually go as far as placing a lien on the house in order to collect that fee. Does that answer the question?
Perfect. Thank you very much, Sergeant Evans. I appreciate that. That was actually more detailed than I expected, so perfect.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, can I interject while we've got Sergeant Evans?
Yes.
One of the biggest concerns that has been raised in the past are these party houses. I assume, you know, if you've got a violation of our ordinances in terms of excessive loud noise and intoxication, things like that, that there would be a more immediate type of response?
Absolutely. That is, that patrol is very familiar with handling the police department's patrol division. And there's a lot of different actions that they can take immediately to address those. So I'll just read one item here from Arvada Municipal Code and it's pertaining to sound. It basically says, "Any device that produces or reproduces sound in a manner is to be plainly audible at the property boundary or through a mutual wall, ceiling or floor or at 25 feet from a moving or parked vehicle is a violation." So that's something that patrol uses very frequently. If we get called to loud parties, intoxicated parties, there is a plethora of existing code that can be used to immediately rectify that situation.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, sorry for interrupting. Did you have other questions?
Uh, just, just a follow-up, but again, thank you, Sergeant Evans. And just another example of our fine police department and the work that they do, so appreciate that. I just wanted to follow up on Nancy's question with regard to the justification for the number of nights. And maybe this is a question for finance or maybe it's a question that Ryan or someone else can answer. But it seems to me that if we have a compliant property who's done the appropriate application, that the tax, the taxes that they pay will also kind of support or justify the number of nights that, the 240 nights. And is that, is that a true assumption? I'm looking at my screen and all I see is the mayor, so.
So your question is, the taxes that they pay of the 240 nights, will this help cost cover the-
No.
I, I'm, I-
It's a bad, I asked a bad question. Can I start over?
You may.
So, um, one of the requirements or stipulations is that they can only rent the property for 240 nights. If they're a compliant short-term rental operation, they will have already filled out an application and followed whatever sales tax rules that the city has. At the end of the year, it seems to me that the sales tax collection that the city gets will indicate if they're over the number of allotted nights. Based on that tax collection. I mean, we, it's based on math, but it gets us pretty close.
Well, not necessarily, because you file your taxes monthly and you don't necessarily say, I, you file them in a sum. And so you might have collected $300 in tax, but we wouldn't necessarily know that that $300 represented 10 days or 20 days or whatnot, because all the room rentals could be different based on any number of factors that's defined by that. So the number of days would not necessarily be reported as a result of the, the sales tax collection.
No, good, that's, that's, I appreciate that. They didn't cover that in Accounting 101, so I missed that section. So no, good, good catch and that actually clarifies it perfectly for me.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Pfeifer.
Oh, good. I was a late bloomer and pushing my button, so thanks for calling me, Mayor. So I want to add on to that question because isn't there any way we could add in our tax collection for short-term rentals? They can list how many days were in their monthly tax that was rented? And is it something we can add a field to? One less, one less piece of paper to certify and try to get in and more paperwork for our people to deal with?
You know, it's something we, I don't want to say yes or no. It's something that we could certainly look into. I don't see anybody from finance on it. What I am, my initial reaction to concern is related to when they get, you know, several thousand sales tax receipts in each month and looking for something different on this particular form. So I don't want to speak for them and say whether they could or couldn't do it. We are going to go through a, a process to make sure that we get all our processes in place and we can certainly put that on the list. So one way or another, we're going to know whether or not it's a self-certification or whether or not there's a mechanism that we could use as they file their taxes. We can look at the most effective and efficient way for everybody when we go through the process, so.
Does this ordinance confine or restrict our ability to take out the certification on something like that and a few others? Because if you're finding, I see a lot of certification, a lot of paperwork going on here, which I appreciate and we got to know, but I would hope there'd be some sort of automation consolidation in the process. I just don't want to approve a ordinance that says you will certify and then you are now going to have to get notarized documents on everything that you list here. I mean, I guess we could always change it later in the ordinance, but we should come out of the gate either saying certified or, you know, whatever the current process is listed by the city.
Councilmember Pfeifer, if we can look into it on the form right now with remittances, there can be electronic remittance and if there is a line that's filled out, they remit, when they remit their taxes, they're certifying those taxes, which is a normal part of the process, so we can look into that. I don't want to commit to exactly how it would work, but it is logical that it is something that could-
So that could be a certification?
As part of when they remit their taxes.
I just don't want to limit our ability to adapt as we go through this.
And, yeah, we wouldn't want to have to review all that additional work.
That works. And then the other one that causes a little, little heartburn for me is this whole three-person one. And I agree with Nancy, I don't recall, or three properties per owner. But I think at the end of the day, I could live with it if you could probably explain a little bit how we're going to manage the individual property owner owning three, especially when they open up LLCs on each property. So does that mean each LLC gets to have three properties and I have 16 LLCs in the city? That means I could have whatever that is, 49 properties? I'm trying to figure out, how do you police the fact that I, Bob, has three properties? Or do I open up an LLC and each LLC can have three properties? How are you managing that?
So Councilmember Pfeifer, I certainly respect and understand your point. I think this is one of the things that we identified as being a challenge for kind of the multiple, allowing multiple properties. This is, this is where it kind of went back and forth where we were talking about primary residents or non-primary residents. And so I certainly agree, it is another mechanism in which the owners would need to certify that they were only operating no more than three. And we're not intending to go out and necessarily look for, you know, how many LLCs are out there in those different names. The things that we have is, we have the applications coming in. We would be able to cross-reference that and look at those things. But really what it does is it gives us a mechanism. So should it become an issue and should we learn that somebody is in violation because they got three LLCs and now they have nine short-term rentals, we can point back to this and say, you can't be doing this. But again, it's, it's more of a safeguard for us to be able to protect in the instance that this happens. I think it's highly unlikely that we would get people doing that. And then we can do the best of our ability to kind of look through the applications that come in. And I think it's reasonable to cross-check those applications, but from, as a due diligence. But in terms of, you know, that level of scrutiny, I certainly agree and I understand the point that you're making that it would, it would be difficult for somebody who really wanted to try to deceive us to use LLCs in that way. I do think it's unlikely, but your point is well-taken.
Well, I think my concern is, is in light of the housing situations and rentals and so forth, I'd hate to see properties consumed for short-term rentals eroding away from the housing stock we have. You know, I'm not, I don't know if a corporation comes in and decides to buy a bunch or not and I'm assuming that that one corporation, whatever, it's an S corp or whatever kind that somebody comes in as, I'm assuming they have three and then an LLC. I mean, I'm sure John has a couple LLCs, don't you? No? You're all personally owned? Oh, good job, John. Uh, but I know a lot of people that do rental properties put an LLC for each address. And that's, that's just my concern. And it's more of eroding away from our housing stock and rental properties as well as homeownership. So hopefully we'll put something in place that, I don't expect you to scrutinize every little piece, but we need to be aware of it. I'm not sure where, I mean, I'm a little alarmed that it's 300 properties, but, you know, we're in Arvada. We shouldn't be seeing a huge amount of these coming in, but who knows? So that's just one area that, if we can focus on that and pay attention. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Simpson?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So my first question, and perhaps I'm just, I'm either reading this wrong or I'm reading it exactly correctly, forgive me. The number of short-term rentals units per lot, it says basically one legal dwelling, dwelling unit or AGR. Does that include primary residents or anything? So basically, could somebody have an apartment over their garage and their primary residence? And so even though they're technically on the same lot, that's two? Or are they limited to only one of those being able to be a short-term rental?
They wouldn't be allowed to rent out either one of them, but they still can only have one reservation at a time. So they would only be able to rent out one or the other at any given point in time. But they could interchange them and rent, you know, the ADU for a few weeks and the primary residence for a few weeks. They just cannot do that at the same time.
And would the 240 days apply to each one individually or to the property as a whole?
That applies to the property as a whole.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much, Rob, for clarifying. The second is the complaints. Um, the second is the complaints, uh, structure, so I'm happy to see the violation, um, the fees here. And I, I'm just curious because it goes from A and it lays out the, the three fees and then it goes to B, revoke the license. Is it, uh, three strikes and you're out rule, um, for continual violations? Or do you just continue to rack up fines?
So it's, um, it's a couple of things. So it's three strikes, um, and you're out, or you can go to you're out. Um, so this does, the way that it's worded, give, um, the, the city the ability to revoke the license if the violation is so egregious that, uh, that it is deemed, um, appropriate to revoke the license. Um, so you can go through the, uh, the three-strike, uh, process or, um, or just revoke the license. So it's either or.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Ryan. That actually takes care of my next question. And then my only other thought was, um, actually following up on Mr. Pfeifer's point, um, in terms of how do we maybe regulate? I, I also remember us talking about, um, the, uh, primary residence plus one. I thought that was where we had landed as well, but I, I have no problem with it being the three, I really don't. But, uh, one of the ideas I had originally with that primary plus one is that the plus one had to be tied to a primary. So perhaps just, I know you guys will figure this out and you will do an amazing job because you always do. But maybe that could be a potential solution is that the, uh, three have to be tied to a sp- particular primary residence. And then that might eliminate the problem of LLCs driving it up across the board. So, just one thought. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Ms. Miller?
I think Councilmember Jones wanted to speak as well.
Thank you. Ms. Jones, do you wish to speak again?
No, no, I'm good. Thank you.
And Councilmember Ford would like to speak again. Okay. I don't see any other lit up for questions.
Okay. Ms. Miller, do you wish to make a motion?
Absolutely. As soon as I pull my iPad back up that went to sleep during that conversation. Sorry. All right, Your Honor, I move that Council Bill 20 dash 020, an ordinance amending Chapter 98 Taxation by amending subsection 98 dash 661 paren- oh, parentheses one, E, and Section 98 dash 243, amending Chapter 11 of the Land Development Code, Measurements, Rules of Construction, and Definitions by amending Section 11 dash 3 dash 3, Definitions, and adding a new subsection 3 dash 1 dash 5 dash 3 to the Land Development Code, Chapter 3, Use Regulations of the City of Arvada Code to allow for the licensing and taxation of short-term rental of a dwelling, dwelling unit, or accessory dwelling unit, residential, be approved on final reading number 4737 and ordered published by title only. I'd like to speak to the motion.
Okay.
Councilmembers Ford and Simpson, would you like to speak first just because I can see the lights and I think I have an unfair advantage?
Mayor Protan Miller, I'd like to make, uh, uh, or ask for an, uh, amendment to the, uh, to your, uh, motion. If you would like to entertain the idea of under D4, where it says that each short-term rental, uh, it talks about containing a brochure, that includes different information, I wanted to ask if you would entertain a motion that in addition to the items that are mentioned under number four, that we could also include a guide, uh, to short-term management, a brochure talking about being a good neighbor. Uh, I discussed this with Mr. Devon, the idea, and, uh, possibly identifying all the ordinances in that brochure that would pertain to be, to being a good neighbor, the things that we have like, um, you know, nor- noise ordinances, and anything that would pertain to, you know, violation would cause you to be a bad neighbor.
Ms. Morris, is that part of the, the motion or is that?
I think Ms. Ford is offering a friendly amendment. So if you, if you'd like to accept that amendment, you can do so. If you would like to not do that, then everyone can vote on whether to, um, add that amendment to your motion.
Sure. I think I'd like to just have the council vote on that, knowing the history, although I was not here last time this was brought up. Knowing the history of how the whole vote went down last time because of the different amendments, I'd like us to vote on this amendment and then.
Okay, the motion is to amend, uh, Ms. Miller's motion. If you'll please cast your vote on that or if anybody wishes to speak to that motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make sure, does staff have clarity around the friendly amendment? Because it's, it is a little vague, so.
Councilmember Pfeifer, I, I would say I do, only because Councilmember Ford and I discussed this. I actually had a conversation with the Chief of Police, uh, well, actually during our strategic meeting this morning. Uh, we talked about the idea of a, um, Good Neighbor's Guide or something along those lines that would, um, uh, be something that could be posted or provided in each short-term rental, illustrating the, um, behaviors and, and the way that, uh, that we would want people to use the short-term rentals so that they can stay within the law.
Okay. Is that what you intend? Is that what you intend?
Yeah. And what I mentioned to, uh, Mr. Devon was also, I actually think that this is something that we really, that would benefit us as a city too. And this came about from a constituent of mine who was looking for a rule and couldn't find it. If we had codes, uh, on, that had to do with being a good neighbor or what you hope people are not doing, meaning that they're a good neighbor. Um, I think it would be helpful too for all residents to be able to have access to a quick reference guide to see, you know, where they can find these, uh, code violations or, or, um, you know, where those code violations are mentioned in our code.
Okay, Mr. Marriott wishes to speak to the motion to amend?
I, I do, and I have a question for Ms. Ford. Are you, uh, thinking of a, uh, city-produced and supplied piece of literature? Or are you asking for a, a short-term rental property owner to produce a piece of literature?
I'm, I'm actually thinking of the city providing a brief summary of all codes that pertain to living, uh, here in Arvada, where residents, including those residents who might find themselves next to a short-term rental, where they could easily find the, uh, code violations that might relate to what they're dealing with.
Okay. So if, if I'm getting you correct, you're, you're wanting the city to produce some literature that a short-term rental property owner would be compelled to include in their unit? I just want to be clear what, what it is you're asking.
Yes.
Okay.
So, so that the renters too could very easily look up and see what, what our violations are.
Okay, fine. The, the only que- the question I would have then for staff, whether it be Mr. Devon or Mr. Stachelsky or, or whoever, is that something that the city staff is able to and prepared to do and then able to provide to folks who would like to do short-term rentals? And honestly, it sounds like a good idea for people who do long-term rentals too, but is the city capable of and, and able to provide that, um, in the quantities necessary for people to do that?
I believe we can.
Okay. And would the intention of the city be to do that at no cost to the short-term renter, to the short-term property owner or be part of what you get for the taxes you supply or the, the annual, annual licensing fee?
I think it's something that we could do, we could start off that way. If it's something that becomes costly, we can certainly look at a, at a license fee increase or something along those lines in the future.
Okay. So I, I would, um, ask Ms. Ford if she would like to just include that in her, uh, in her motion that, uh, you know, the property owner shall be, shall provide a city-supplied, uh, brochure indicating all the various codes about being a good neighbor in Arvada, uh, that is provided by the city. Just so that it's clear, uh, what the expectations by everybody are.
That'd be fine.
Okay.
And I actually would like.
Anybody else wish to speak to the motion to amend?
Um, I would actually like to just, uh, further, um, friendly amend, the friendly amendment as it is available. Um, because, uh, it may take our city staff a time to, some time to get that together and that may run longer than short-term rentals becoming started. So I just want to make sure that we have, like, they will supply as the city supplies, as it is available or something like that. I don't want anyone to be punished because we required them to have a document and didn't give it to them. That's all I'm saying.
No, I'm not looking to punish people. I, I also, I'm going to make a comment right now too because while, while I can, um, well, do we want to, are we going to vote on the overall? Because I want to make some comments before we vote.
You have a motion on the Florida amend.
We have a, we have an amendment to the motion that we need to vote on. Do you want to make a comment on your amendment?
No, no, I want to make.
Okay, so we need Councilmembers Pfeifer, Marriott, and Simpson to vote on the amendment. All right, Your Honor, all Councilmembers on the dais have voted on the amendment to the motion.
I will support the amendment.
All right, so the amendment passes with, um, six voting yes and Councilmember Marriott voting no.
Okay, thank you. Now back to the main motion made by Ms. Miller. Is there further discussion on that motion?
It looks like we have Councilmembers Pfeifer, Ford, Marriott, and Simpson, and myself that would like to speak to the motion.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Pfeifer?
Yeah, I just want to say that, you know, this has been a long journey on short-term rentals and, uh, for a long time, for those that have been watching on this subject, I haven't been overwhelmingly excited for this, uh, ordinance. I wasn't really supportive of it, uh, for a long time. I think that the, the team here in, uh, in the city, as well as all stakeholders that weighed in on, on it, I, I feel like I could, I could move a little bit closer in supporting, uh, this, this ordinance tonight and just moving forward with, uh, the friendly amendment that was just approved. Um, the only thing I would just ask is try our best to limit the three, just because of the housing stock concerns that, that I think a few of us have. But, you know, at the end of the day, I think this is some, some good, um, uh, good ordinance to help with short-term rentals and, and maybe, uh, create some little diversity around, uh, rentals and short-term rentals, like hotels, we don't really have a lot of those. So therefore I'll be supporting it, uh, the ordinance tonight and looking forward to it moving forward. Hopefully it doesn't become a problem.
Thank you. Ms. Ford?
So this is a tough one for me because I actually have no problems with short-term rentals. Um, I like the concept, although, um, I've had a lot of communications with my constituents and to be very frank, I've done a little surveying and have asked people how they felt about short-term rentals. And I can't say that, other than people who want to implement short-term rentals and those who want to use short-term rentals, those who would live next to them, nobody has said they really want to live next to a short-term rental. And so because we've added more short-term rentals to this issue, I feel compelled to vote no because I just think it's, we're starting off with more than we need to. I think that it's, um, you know, there are cities that have had problems with this. Um, I think it would be wiser to start off with one, uh, to see how it goes here in Arvada. And, but because we're not doing that, it forces me to vote no on this issue because of the number that we're allowing.
Thank you. Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just would like to make a couple of comments as well. So, um, I am going to be voting yes on this ordinance for a couple of reasons. One is, this is already going on and has been going on in our community for a long time and it's completely regulated. There are no licensing, no tax being collected, um, no penalties, uh, and it's just been going on. And this, I believe, legitimizes a, brings into compliance an existing situation, uh, that clearly there's a market for. Now, they will be, have license, be licensed, so we'll know who they are and where they are. They will be, uh, collecting lodging tax to help defray some of the expenses to the city organization that the city is, is suffering some of. Uh, there will, there are penalties for, uh, mismanagement or misbehavior of, of renters, clear up to, uh, removal of your license to do it, removal of your privilege to do it, which is, uh, very much stronger than the situation that we have now. And I fear by, uh, by not passing this, we, we put ourselves in a position of, uh, of, of the status quo rather than better than the status quo. This certainly makes us better than the status quo. A couple of other things about the reality of this is that, uh, having, uh, stayed in, uh, short-term rentals when we go on vacation, um, my experience has been they're very nicely kept up. They're generally the nicest properties in the area where you go, because that's the expectations of the customers. I own a number of rental properties, none of them short-term rental properties, but the, the expectations of a short-term renter are far higher than that of a long-term renter who's looking for either, you know, location or primarily price or size. So I, I think, I think the properties are generally very well-maintained and very well-managed. Uh, short-term rentals is a, is a management exercise and the only people who will be successful are those who will be able to manage well and manage intensely. And, and I think that, again, that delivers the best product. And then mostly, I believe, this provides opportunities for property owners in, in, uh, our city. There are all kinds of situations where people, either through inheritance or through marriage or any other type of situation, end up with real estate they might like to hold and they have several options for holding it. One may be just let it sit empty. Well, I don't think that's good for anybody. Uh, it's certainly not good for the market. It's not good for the neighbors and I'm not sure it's good for that person. There are long-term rental options and short-term rental, renting provides another option for those property owners. And so that's very good for our community members, very good for our friends and neighbors, some of whom, you know, whether they inherit a property or purchase a property or through marriage end up with an extra property, it gives them more options. Uh, and so I think it's very positive from that standpoint. So for all those reasons, I will be voting yes.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Simpson?
Uh, thank you. Yes, uh, I will also be voting yes on this amendment. Um, just to quickly speak to that, I agree with, uh, many of Mr. Marriott's sentiments. I myself have used Airbnb while traveling on business and personal and it's been just excellent pretty much every time. There's, uh, Airbnb does a wonderful job these days. There used to be a lot of problems, no doubt, but, um, for those who use the service now, they know that there are very strict, uh, identity verification systems for both, uh, renters and also rentees, so, um, like way more than you have for a hotel. So I, I think that that'll be really good and that they've done, as a corporation, a law, a good bit of traction towards fixing their own problems. Um, the truth is that the sharing economy is here to stay. Uh, this is a reality. We all use Uber and Lyft now. We, uh, Airbnb, other services of this nature. It's just the direction that, uh, the economy has taken and it's not going backwards at any time. So it behooves us to, you know, be in, in the current, in market, regulating it, making sure we're doing it right. And also, um, to the, uh, Ms. Strasbrough's, uh, point, apologies if I mispronounced your name, Trudy, that we are, we have that mechanism for code enforcement to make sure it's being done right. I'm very happy to see that three strikes and you're out, or one strike and you're out if you really break the rules. Very, very happy that that's in there. And then, uh, just frankly, we're in a tough economy right now and this provides a lot of economic opportunity for people whose housing costs may be high, particularly in this market, and, uh, that they can perhaps do something just to help keep themselves afloat in the more near term. So I will be voting yes for all of those reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Miller?
I think we have, um, Councilmember Jones before me.
Okay, Ms. Jones?
Sounds like Councilmember Miller or Mayor Protan Miller would like the last word, um, which is perfect. Um, I just.
Oh, I'll take the last word, don't worry.
That's right, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate that. Um, I just, you know, I, I think I will be supporting this. I think this is a step in the right direction and I appreciate the work, um, of the staff. This has not been, uh, an easy question. Um, I own two rental properties. I own a long-term rental property in Arvada and I own a short-term rental property in another state. And both serve completely different needs and clientele. And to Mr. Marriott's comment, my, my short-term rental, um, is graded every single time it's used. And I count on those grades, um, uh, so that it can be rented again because people. be rented again because people, to Ms. Simpson's comments, people look at that and they don't choose a place if it doesn't have high ratings. And so I'm incented to make sure that our short-term rental is nice and kept up and the yards are good and the furniture is nice and all of the things that come along with a short-term rental. So I, I think that this is a, a step in the right direction and I just appreciate the work that's been done to get us here. It's been a good debate. I wish that we would have solved this the first time, but I'm glad that it came back and we can solve it now.
Thank you. Ms. Miller for the next to last word?
Thank you so much. Actually, I don't have much because everybody already said all of my things. The one thing I would submit is to Councilmember Pfeiffer that was talking about owning multiple LLCs. I also own rental properties and I do have an LLC that owns them. I cannot imagine the paperwork that goes with all of those, having more than one LLC and having to do the paperwork for an LLC for every single Airbnb. I don't think it would be worth the cost. It would be a giant headache. But for all of the reasons that everybody set up here, Councilmembers Marriott, Simpson and Jones, I will be supporting the motion. And, and I'm sorry, it, it would have been done earlier. I missed the meeting. I missed one meeting and it's my fault and I'm sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. And frankly, if we were under the format we are today now that we've learned about Zoom and even a mayor who is on vacation is able to participate via technology. So I voted against this the last time and it failed on a three to three vote because Ms. Miller was not there and she had clearly indicated, had she been there, she would have supported the proposal. Frankly, I'm glad it didn't pass the first time because our team has done an excellent job of making it better. The safeguard is better, I think, in terms of, of neighbors. I think a lot of thought and process has gone into it. So we actually are ending up with a better product now than what was being presented the first time. And as such, I will be supporting the motion. So if Council will vote?
All members on the dais have cast their vote, Your Honor. If you'd like to say your vote before I display these.
Thank you. I will vote yes.
And that passes six to one with Councilmember Ford voting against.
Thank you very much. Does anybody need a break? Are we doing okay?
We're going to need a break up here, Your Honor.
Okay, we'll take a break.
A site plan application will be required should the conditional use for the continuing care facility be approved. As part of that site plan review, staff will look at, for specific details related to the project, including building height and building design and landscape design and how those comply with the land development code requirements. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of the conditional use request during their July 7th meeting by a vote of six to one. We have received a signposting, log and mailing affidavit and they are in order. The applicant, Eric Chekel, is available, I believe, in council chambers with some members of his team on Zoom for presentation and questions. And I will also be available for questions at the end of the comment. Thank you.
Thank you. If everyone who is going to be testifying in this matter would raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to give in these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And all others in council chambers, I hope you have done the same. With regard to the posting, log and mailing affidavit, they will be made part of the record. I will disclose that several members of council have toured the site with city team members, not with the applicant, but to get our feet on the ground there and see what the site conditions are, things of that nature. And we have received, we have all received numerous emails from the communities adjacent. I understand we've got some organized presentations that will be made in opposition to this. So the format will be that I will allow the applicant to make a presentation. Then we will take public testimony from citizens and HOA representatives. The applicant will be afforded an opportunity for some rebuttal and then we'll open it up for city council questions in action. So with that, the applicant may make their presentation.
Thank you. I took off my mask. I hope that's okay.
That's okay for, yes, while you're speaking.
Thank you. Well, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro, Mayor Pro Tim, other city council members. Thank you very much for hearing us this evening. We've been working on this project for, gosh, about 16 months now and your staff has been wonderful, very responsive, able to answer all of our questions. I wanted to appreciate them as well this evening. My name is Eric Chekel. I work for United Properties. I'm a senior development manager. Our address is 1331 17th Street, Suite 604. That's in Denver, 80202. I'd also wanted to commend you on your ability to stay open during the pandemic. There's been many cities that have really just shut down their public hearings. So I've been watching a lot of your public hearings in anticipation of this evening. So I've been impressed with, with what you've been able to do. I'm even on the planning commission for my little town that I live in down south and I've taken some of your, some of your process into that planning commission that I, that I work on. So again, I commend you for your efforts and it really seemed seamless that you, the process never stopped. So especially during the remapping process that you went through, I know there was a lot involved there. Specifically, this, this property was affected by that remapping because it created that conditional use permit requirement for this property. And again, the reason we're here tonight is for that conditional use for a, a senior living facility, continuing care. And we have submitted site plans, elevations to the city, a bunch of grading and a bunch of engineering drawings and things of that nature. But again, our focus this evening, as well as during this process, since we started working on it in the, we started working on the conditional use early spring because that's what was determined that the process we would be going through. You know, our focus was just to look at what uses were allowed to date or with this remapping on the property and then also prior. And then how we feel that our proposed use fits within what the current zoning, the, the general commercial, how that will work within that, within that zoning category. So a lot of the discussion tonight will be about that from me. I do have my consultants, all my consultants, or our consultants, I should say, on board here as well as other people from United Properties, the company I work for, as well as our operator, a group called ISL, Integral Senior Living. They are based in California, but yet they own a couple of properties here in, in Colorado. They're looking to expand not only in Arvada, but also up in Fort Collins and other Denver metro area and the Denver metro area. So you'll hear from them tonight as well. So with that, I just wanted to talk about United Properties a little bit, if I may. We were founded in 1916, so we've been around for over 100 years. We're headquartered in Minnesota, in Minneapolis. But here locally, we have an office, like I mentioned, in Denver. We have about 10 people in that office. We also have an office in Austin, Texas. We just opened up that office there. We're a pretty good-sized company. We're privately held by the Polad family out of Minneapolis. We have about half a billion dollars in market value. We own quite a bit of square feet of commercial space as well as different residential products from, you know, apartments to senior living. And I work in the senior living division, specifically. Been working here for a couple of years, came in from the, from working on retail, which was my specialty for, for several, several years, as well as land development. So for example, one of the projects that we developed, we developed a project here in, in Arvada, and that's the, the 711 Starbucks and Phillips 66th at the northeast corner of Indiana and 87th. That was a successful project. It had trials and tribulations, but we found a way to work through that and we were able to do that development along with Evergreen, with the property in back. This project, if we are successful this evening, would be our second senior living development in Colorado. Our first one is down in Littleton. It's called Belfour Senior Living. We are the owner, owner, but yet our operator is Belfour. They're a group out of Colorado and they own several facilities here in Colorado and also nationally. A great operator that we really enjoy working with, but they're focused more nationally these days. So we've been looking for other, other operators to operate our facility. And, and like I mentioned earlier, we've chosen ISL, which this will be our first endeavor with them, but we've been nothing but impressed with, with their capabilities for helping us design the interior as well as the exterior of this facility. So what, what we're talking about this evening is a, it's 120-unit senior living facility. And in that, there's 96 assisted living and 24 memory care units. So a total of 120. It's always been 100, 120 since the first day we started working on the project back last spring or a year ago, back in 2019 in the spring. And the focus of our, the, the resident that we focus on is the person that averages the age of, about the age of 80 is the, is the resident that we're focused on. Our, our mission statement in our senior living group for United Properties is the following. Our passion is to enrich the lives of seniors by creating deep roots through meaningful relationships with our operating partners, our residents and their families. It, it really is truly the, the mission statement of, you know, not just the company, but it's the people that work within the company. We have a really tight-knit group of individuals that work here in Colorado as well as Minnesota, Texas, and we have projects in Florida as well. And it truly, people really live and breathe that, that statement. It's something that we, we truly believe in. We do have, as I mentioned earlier, we do have other operating partners. We always focus on the, the number one operator in the, in the local area. In Minnesota, we work with a group called Ebenezer in Great Lakes. Here locally, like, like I said, is Belfour as well as Integral Senior Living. And, well, like I said earlier, who I will introduce this evening. So to go back to the, to the process- So to go back to the, to the process that, that we've, we've been working on is after the city passed the remapping of the city, which allowed for this property to be heard as a conditional use by zoning it as the, the general commercial, there's a couple of things I wanted to point out, a couple of different uses that are allowed within the general commercial zone as a use by right. And those include hotel, daycare, hospitals, office buildings, restaurants, standalone or fast food, gas stations, and, and car washes. But again, what we're here to present is our, our conditional use for our senior living facility, which I believe it's focused on a conditional use because it's, it's kind of, it's a hybrid. It's a, it's a commercial use, you know, it gets licensed as a, as a commercial use and permitted as a commercial use, but at the same time, it's a residential use. So we'll have 120 plus residents within this facility. And I think the, the melding of those two uses, I think, is really what triggers it to become a conditional use, because it's, it's a unique, it's a unique use within the commercial use category. So what, what I was going to start with was actually walking through the site plan, and then I'll talk a little bit about the elevations. We've, we've been working on the project, as I stated earlier, for quite some time. I've been working with neighborhood groups. I've met with the, the Westwood Ridge Neighborhood Group four different occasions, three in person and one virtually, had several meetings on the phone or exchanges through, through email. As I've seen, you've received your own several, several emails or letters from those groups as well. And I look forward to talking about all those topics this evening, either during our presentation or during that, that rebuttal period, or to answer any questions you might have. So if you wouldn't mind, if we could jump to the next slide. I'm gonna grab a little water here, if that's okay. So I'm, it sounds like you've visited the site, so I'm happy to hear that. The site there is located at 63rd and McIntyre Parkway. The site was really created by when Mac, when old McIntyre was realigned to, to new McIntyre Parkway several years ago, which, which allowed for the development of that, that regional power center with the Kohl's and the King Supers. So this is a piece of property that was, a triangular piece of property that was created by that realignment of, of old McIntyre into McIntyre Parkway. If you could please jump to the next slide. Okay, so this is our site plan. North is to the right, so west is up, okay? Again, as I mentioned, it's 96 assisted living units and 24 memory care units. And the units will range in size from 350 feet up to 1,140 square feet. Also, within the building, there's several common areas. There's fitness, fitness areas, there's a gym associated with that fitness area, television lounge, a bistro, a game room, a large themed dining room for guests to, or residents to also invite their guests to, to dine with them. Also, we have a full service commercial kitchen within, within the facility. So there's a lot of common area, but yet there's the, the 120 units that I talked about. The, the facility will be fully licensed through the state, which allows it to have nursing care within the facility to serve every single unit with, within the building. So the, the intersection of 63rd and McIntyre is at the bottom of the page, and I'm just going to walk through the, walk through our site plan, just to make sure I'm clear. I have heard in the past that I haven't explained the site plan very well, and the colors that you'll see are yellow and orange and a different shade of orange. Those are set up for reason that they show the different heights of the building. So let me, let me walk through this. If you're coming in off of 63rd, 63rd Avenue and driving to the west, towards the Westwoods, Westwoods Village neighborhood, you get to old McIntyre, which is at the top of the page. So that was where old McIntyre used to connect through in the past, and that right of way still exists. So that's City of Arvada's right of way that exists until it turns to the east or it turns to the left, that's where that, that right of way stops. So what we've done is we've taken, utilizing that right of way, and we would rebuild that, that road that sits out there today. And if you saw it, it's pretty, it's pretty beat up and just old and just weathered over time. So we would rebuild that, that right of way and then connect our access road into the parking lot off of the end of that road. When you pull in, the yellow V shape on the end there up at the top, that is a single story building. So that is our memory care area right there. So that's a single story. The height's about 17 feet, so the height is less than our neighbors to the west. So our neighbors to the west are, are large, you know, single family detached homes, but they're two story or some are two stories with a walkout, so three story homes. And so our, we're located more than 150 feet away from those homes. Our memory care building is a, more than 150 feet away from those homes. Okay? So that's where the, those 24 memory care units will be. Then the next, as you go to the, to the east, that next shade of orange is where we add two more floors above that memory care wing, okay? So that creates a three story structure in that location. Okay? When you're looking at the building from the west, the whole building is a three story structure from the west. So if you pull in off of old McIntyre into our parking lot, and you look at the, I call it a V, but it flattens out at the bottom there, there, there's a portica share there, which is a covered entryway, a covered driveway. At that portica share, when you're standing there, you're looking at a three story building. Okay? So everything from the west, you're looking at three stories. Where it becomes four stories is if you're looking at it from the east. Because when you walk in on the, I call it the first floor, through the portica share, you walk in to the main floor where the dining room is, a bunch of common areas, the offices are for our operators, you know, there's conference rooms, things like that. You walk in on that first floor, and then there's a, a grand entry with, with stairs that go down to the, to the walkout level, which you could call the basement level. But it's a walkout level that you can see that walkout level when you're east of the building looking west, okay? And I have some, and you've probably already seen our renderings, and, but yet I can, I'll go through those here in a little bit. So everything that's in the, the more orange color, it's not yellow, we're not gold, that is four stories of height of, of units and common area. So there are units on that basement floor, okay? As is, that's where we're going to put the, the fitness room and, you know, the, you know, different gathering areas, a little small, the bistro, and, you know, things of that nature, where people can gather, you know, the game room. It's really, you know, for the guys, you might consider to kind of, maybe there'll be a man cave down there, you know? There, there'll be a craft room down there, you know, things of that nature. It's really the active area down below on the first floor. But then there's units to the, to the south in that southern wing to the south. So that's how the, that's how the building lays out. So again, stepping from west to east and then back to the south, one story, then it jumps up to, to three stories, which is about 220 feet away from our neighbors to the west. And then it steps up to the four stories, but only as you look at it from the east. Also, we provide about 90 parking stalls within the parking lot. Previously, we did have an underground parking garage planned for this facility that would have been accessed off of 63rd Avenue. There's a, being that you are out there, there's a curb cut right now that exists today. We were going to try to tie into that curb cut and put in a underground parking garage that had about 46 stalls in it. But due to the high groundwater table and the poor soils, our geotechnical engineer said it, it's not possible for us to be able to do that underground garage. So that's when we had to pivot, and we, we put all the, all the parking on surface. I will say that, that all the parking will be screened from our neighbors to the northeast and to the east, and also the parking, the surface parking will be south of our neighbors to the west. So that parking is more adjacent to the, the vacant Kelly Trucking property there to the west in the Kelly Trucking Road, which you see that in lighter gray at the top left corner of the, of the page there, that is the, currently the Kelly Trucking, Trucking Route for their facility that's in Jefferson County. We do plan to use that, that existing road there as our emergency access. So that's our second point of access, but it's only for emergency purposes. You could see up at the top of the, top of the parking lot, you could see that there's a gate there, and that gate will be closed unless there, there is a reason to open it for emergency purposes. All of our trucks that, that visit the site, they will come in off of old McIntyre. You could see there's a little triangle there over where it says one story in the, in the light, in the yellow shade, there's a little triangle there. That is our loading and unloading area right there. So that is shielded from our neighbors to the west, and obviously it's shielded from our neighbors to the east because, because of the building that's in the way. So we really took a lot of time and energy in making sure that we limited the amount of noise and light that would be, that this, that this facility would, would create to make sure that we weren't adversely impacting our neighbors, both to the east and, and to the west. Okay? Another thing to point out is that this, you know, it is, it is a triangular site, which makes it challenging to develop. That's a lot of the reason why our architect came up with this shape, was because the, the shape of the site. There is also about 12 to 15 feet of fall across the site from west to east, which is really conducive to this walkout concept. In order to have, you know, put a linear building along the western limits, we would have ended up with a lot of walls, an elevated parking field that would have faced up against 63rd or faced up against McIntyre, and those, those parking lot lights would have been elevated, and they would have shone on the, on the, on our neighbors to the east. So that's why we opted to create this hard edge up against 63rd and McIntyre, which is really one of the others, one of the city's goals of, of commercial development, is to create that hard edge up against these major arterials of which McIntyre is. So again, a lot of that, that thought process went into the reasons why our architect planned it out this way, and our, our senior development team really planned it out this way. At the corner, there will be a detention water quality pond at the corner that we envision that it will be, you know, full of cattails, so that, you know, you'll see some wildlife, I expect, utilizing that area at the corner. Also, we, we are proposing to put in a patio, not only off of that, that basement level, but also we'll have some deck on that walk-in first level that will overlook that green open space at the, at the corner. Okay? So a very nice view from the intersection of 63rd and McIntyre. If we could... If we could jump to the next slide, please? Okay, thank you. So here's our architecture that we're proposing. We're working with a really good architect out of Denver, a group called VTBS. And they've done several, you know, one of their focuses is senior living, and they've done several senior living projects throughout Colorado, also throughout the western United States. And what we're looking at here at the upper left-hand corner, this is a view from basically the end of the right of way of old, of old McIntyre. So this is looking from west to east at the portica share in the distance there beyond the cars. So again, that shows the three story elevation, which is beyond the portica share there. To the left is our memory care wing, which is again, that 17 foot height. You do see a little fence area here. We call that our memory garden, where there's some outdoor space for the, for the memory care residents. It's a protected, it's a protected area, so that, you know, people can't leave that, that memory garden. Hopefully you get a good feel for, for what the architecture will be. I like to call it the Colorado architecture. It does have a lot of beams. It's got stone, some rich dark colors to it. There is a lot of give and take in the building, you know, when it comes to the balconies and the patios and the, and the different materials that we're utilizing, creating shadow. The upper right-hand corner, that perspective, that's from 63rd Avenue. If you're driving from Westwood Village heading east and you just passed old McIntyre, that's the memory care, pretty much on that corner of old McIntyre and 63rd. And I know there's been some comments, I've read some comments about our trees. We'll let you know that the trees that we show, there's actually less trees in number shown on the plan than what are going to be planted. There was just so many trees that they would have, wouldn't have been able to see the, really see the building that well. So we did have our landscape architect pull back the number, but we do show the trees as being mature. These, the trees won't, you know, they'll go in as a, I believe it's a three, three inch cal, two and a half to three inch caliber. These are probably shown as a four to six, six inch caliber, so a little bit taller than, than what will go in day one, but I hope that this still portrays what the facility will look like, you know, day one and also in the future. What you can see in the background is how the building then steps up to, to three stories in that same view in the upper, upper right-hand corner. Okay, so that does step up to the three stories as you go along 63rd, and when, when you make the corner is then when you can, when you see the perspective just below that one. So the middle one on the right is what you'll see at the intersection of 63rd and McIntyre. So if you're standing at that intersection, so these people here that are shaded out, they're standing more or less at that intersection, and they're looking over the, the cattails. We don't show those here because it would, it would block the view of the, of the patio below, but this is the view you see from the corner. So that's that flattening of the, of the V at the corner. Now, this is a four story view that you're looking at from the east looking west. On the bottom floor, again, we do have a patio that's activated with all that ground floor activity. You could walk out on that patio and utilize that space when you're down in the game room. Then up on the second floor, you can see the balcony up above with the red umbrellas there, if you could see that. That's our second floor patio that opens up into the main dining room. Okay? So if you choose to eat inside, obviously you could eat inside, or you could take your meal and eat outside on that second floor patio. Okay, so this is a view that I'm, I'm really quite proud of. We took a lot of time to make sure that we created a nice presence from that intersection. We wanted to make sure that when you're pulling in or you're driving by, that people are intrigued. You could call this our front door. You could also call the portica share our front door. So this building really has more than one front door to it. In my view, I think this, this is the front door because it's off the major arterial. Then the view below that is, that's a skewed view to show if you're just going past that, that main patio area that I was just talking about. We wanted to include this to show the articula- that I was just talking about. We wanted to include this to show the articulation of the building. The elevations that are in our original PDP document that became our CUP document, those are just two-dimensional plans. So we created this three-dimensional plan because those two-dimensionals really made it look flat. And I think we even saw the common barracks-looking building. And so that's why we wanted to show that there is a lot of articulation with this building created by the stone, especially at that ground level and by the, the balconies and the, and the, and the patios that, that we've added. So this would be the view, if, again, if you're standing on McIntyre looking to the south, you can see the balconies there. You see how the building jets in and out. We create different pockets. We have windows on different facades of the building. That again, too, creates shadowing and it really activates, activates the building. And so when you're driving by, you're seeing movement, you know, i- in that building and you're not just seeing, you know, a straight facade, you know, of a building. And then the final view at the bottom left-hand corner is now as you've come around, completely around the building, you're on the south side of the building and you're looking to the north. There's the portico share to the right. You're more or less standing on that, that Kelly Trucking Road or near that Kelly Trucking Road. You're looking to the north with the portico share to the right. The memory care to the left shows the variation in height, you know, how we played off of that. And then still it shows that three-story from the west and from the south and from the west, what you'll see of the building there. So the materials that we're using, cementitious lap siding and trim, heavy timber posts, stone, the balconies, again, wood balconies, portico share, the same, same materials just mentioned on, just mentioned. The, if we could jump to the next slide, I appreciate that. Okay? So this slide also shows the same site plan, but now we're looking to the north. So north is up, obviously west to the east, west to the, to the left. And what we're showing here is, because there's been comments that I'm sure you've read and that we've seen and talked with the, the neighbors about, is the concern for our building blocking views of the neighbors to our east. And so what we've shown is the, the Westwoods Villas, which is the townhomes to the east of us. And we've outlined the four townhomes that we believe will be most impacted by our building. And so those townhomes are approximately...
Sir, if you would stay closer to the microphone.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
And if you could move it along a little bit, you're...
Yep, I, I will. Sorry.
Thank you.
So those, those homes are about a hundred and eighty-two feet away. So what we're showing on this plan is where our building sits. And we're showing that we're, the views that, 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 we're still keeping the views to the south, to the Table Mesa, and then also the views to the north, currently looking at the back of that retail. And we're showing that instead of seeing the back of that retail now, you'll be able to see our building. Then the final thing I wanted to mention before I introduced, introduced Jeffrey with ISL was that, you know, the, the senior population in Arvada is, is very high. It's, as I understand it, per capita, it's the highest senior population in Colorado. So we've also hired a, a market expert to do a market study of the property to make sure that this will be a viable use in the, in the city. And obviously we believe that it is because we've invested the time and, and money to, to, to do this development. So with that, I wanted to introduce Jeffrey with ISL, who's just going to talk real briefly about, about the, the type of facility and the residents within the facility.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem and council members. I, I will be very brief, less, less than a minute so we can move this along. But I just wanted to tell you about the senior living community. Unlike when I was younger, when my grandmother needed to be put in a place, which was a, a nursing home, senior living these days are, is nothing like that. So our seniors move into these communities to continue living a vibrant life with social activities and great food and great, just events going on at our communities. The, the other thing that's a plus for this, we love going into new cities, is the jobs that are created. When we are fully staffed, we're going to have fifty to sixty full and part-time jobs of all levels, from entry levels for servers and, you know, maintenance team to salaried positions, which are well, well into the six figures for department heads and things like that. So all different types of jobs. And again, looking where this is, we're hoping and most of our communities have this, the intergenerational opportunities, multi-generational opportunities for, for school kids to get involved with the senior living, for our seniors to stay very involved in mentoring kids and, and just different things going on there. So we just think this adds a, a great value to the city and, and for our seniors that live in Arvada to be able to stay in Arvada and, and, you know, just live where they've lived for years and, and continue to live there. So thank you again for your time. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
And then I was going to introduce Traffic Row, or Curtis Rowe, who's our traffic engineer.
Thank you.
Who's going to talk about some traffic items.
Yes, hello, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. I'm Curtis Rowe with Kim Lee Horn and Associates, and I'm a traffic engineer. We prepared the traffic impact study for this project following City of Arvada guidelines. And so if you would go to the next slide, please. Our traffic study focused on evaluation of this intersection. This is McIntyre Parkway and 63rd Avenue. As mentioned, McIntyre Parkway is a north-south roadway, but here it, it is shown from the bottom left to the top right. It's currently unsignaled, operates with two-way stop control. Stop signs are located on the 63rd Avenue approaches to McIntyre Parkway. You can see there are crosswalks designated across 63rd Avenue legs, and there's also one across the north leg of McIntyre Parkway. So our traffic study evaluated the impacts of this project, as all traffic impact studies do. Counts were conducted October ninth of 2019. That was a Wednesday, well before the COVID pandemic. So those were the good old days. The AM, we studied the AM and PM peak hour as requested and scoped with City of Arvada staff. We did counts of this intersection that included pedestrians and bicycles. We also did vehicle observation and wait-time evaluations. And so what we found with regards to this project is with the addition of, of the development and the traffic expected, this intersection will continue to operate acceptably now and into the future. We increased traffic by more than fifty percent on McIntyre Parkway for future conditions analysis. That's due to construction that was occurring on McIntyre Parkway to the south. As known, that roadway is being expanded to include additional capacity. And so traffic volumes along McIntyre Parkway are expected to continue to increase. We did have a few recommendations. Those were related to site distance, so removal of some trees within the median to improve site distance, to include pedestrian crosswalk signage and some other type of indication for that north leg of McIntyre. That was as a result of public meetings and input from the public. And then also to install no outlet signing on 63rd. You know, with regards to this intersection, you know, we've heard from, from the, from the public that they would like to see a traffic signal here. We did evaluate it to see if one would be warranted. Just the, unfortunately, the volumes on 63rd Avenue are just too low. It does not warrant a traffic signal, but based upon the addition of project traffic, a traffic signal is not believed to be needed either. And so then if you'd go to the next slide, please. This shows our trip generation comparison. We put this together quickly just to put a perspective or comparison in terms of what this proposed assisted living, one-hundred-and-twenty-unit, one-hundred-and-forty-three-bed development would generate from a traffic perspective compared to what else could otherwise go on this site. And so if you look at this table, you know, this proposed Project Cherrywood Point is the assisted living. And you can see from that in the daily column, it's expected to generate three-hundred-and-seventy-two daily trips. And then in the far-right column, that's the total PM peak hour. The afternoon peak hour is the highest traffic volume hour of the day. And so during that timeframe, thirty-seven trips would be expected. And so then all of the other uses that could go on this site are provided below. I won't read through all those because obviously you could see them. But I know that daycare was considered here on this site, and so that's about three, three rows down. You can see that there's about twelve-hundred trips possible from a daycare on this site or two-hundred-and-seventy-eight PM peak hour trips. And then hospital right below that, you know, is a thousand daily trips with about a hundred occurring in the peak hour. And then, you know, if this site were developed with retail or retail and restaurant, you know, fifteen-thousand square feet of each, you can see this is the highest volume, but you know, we would be at maybe fifty-three-hundred daily trips. And the afternoon peak hour, about two-hundred-and-sixty-nine. So from a traffic perspective, this Cherrywood Senior Living project is actually a very, very low traffic generator compared to what could go here. And so from a traffic perspective, it's a good traffic neighbor in terms of generating less traffic. And so that is what I wanted to cover from a traffic perspective, but I'll be available to answer any questions later. So for now, I'll turn it back over to Eric.
Thank you. And we're going to skip the next slide, if we could, and just go on. There you go. I'm just going to jump back to this. I did want to identify from a, a construction perspective, how we're going to access the site for construction. It's our intention to use the Kelly Trucking Road for our construction access. There is a triangle there south of that road there to the left of the top-left page. That's where we would plan to set up our construction trailer, do some staging on the property. That is property that, that we will own. So the bulk of our, our work will, will happen off of that. 63rd Avenue will not be a main construction point. We do need to do some construction on 63rd with some utility tie-ins. That's where the utility tie-ins are located, two waters and a sewer. And then also we need to improve Old McIntyre. So we need to rebuild that curb cut there at that, at that northwest corner of the site. So we will need to do a little bit of work up on, on 63rd, but yet we will, when, when working on that, that road, we'll make sure that we have flaggers out there to, to make sure that they're not impacting the, the daily trips from the, from our neighbors to the west. Another item that, that has come up a couple times is that there is a prairie dog colony on the property. It's been working with two different consultants on that, a gal by the name of Sandy Nervig with Prairie Dog Consultants with Growing Ideas, as well as Tim DeMasters. He's the owner of Right Line Environmental. Tim's an individual I've been using for several years. And Sandy is a prairie dog expert. So it is our intention to relocate the prairie dogs if we can find a place to relocate them to. In Jefferson County, anywhere in Jefferson County, the prairie dog relocation has to stay within Jefferson County. That's a, that's a state, that's a statute. So we're currently looking for a location to, to move the prairie dogs to. We've been told that Rocky Flats is not accepting any prairie dogs for the year 2021. But yet there might be a, I just heard recently from a neighbor of ours, actually, that, from Carrie Darling, that, that there is a possibility there might be an opening at Rocky Flats in early 2021. So we, we will continue to pursue that endeavor. Then just to touch on entitlements real quick, the property was annexed in 1995, rezoned in 2000 to PUD, BPR, Business Professional Residential. In '05, there's an ODP amendment that, that Kurt mentioned that it was rezoned for daycare, but that daycare did not build. Then in 2019, we entered into a JV partnership agreement with the, with the gentleman that owned, owned the property today. So to date, we've hosted neighborhood, several neighborhood meetings, the one required by, required by city, by the city, and then have, have also hosted several others. Everything that we are proposing here is in accordance with the, with your land development code. The continuing care facility meets all those, as we've laid it out to date, meets all those requirements. We do not have any concerns about the, what's allowed within the CG Zone District when it comes to setbacks and building coverage, landscaping require, landscape requirements, all those things. We do, we will meet all those requirements within your LDC. We, we do feel like this, this is a very great transition from residential to the, the regional shopping center to the north of us. We feel like it is, it is a good fit within the neighborhood because it is a commercial property. It's got those commercial uses, you know, such as that commercial kitchen, the fitness, the restaurant. The, there is a sales check, a sales tax generation component here for the food and the liquor and several of the, the healthcare, medical supplies, which makes it a, a good commercial use. And then also just from a residential use, several of the units have two bedrooms and several are just studios. So there is a, a myriad of different types of uses or types of different residential uses with, within the building. The final thing I wanted to touch on before I finish up here is the summary of the compliance with the conditional use approval criteria that's found within your land development code. And there are, there are six criteria that the project needs to meet to be approved as a conditional use. And with that, I did put that into the, into the presentation. I'm not going to read through each, each of them, but if you go to the next slide, this lists how we feel like we have met those conditions. And I'm just going to touch on a, on a couple of them, in the interest of time, just going to touch, touch on a couple of them. The first one, you know, speaks to if we comply with the applicable standards of this LDC, other adopted city ordinances, resolutions and regulations, including any other approved master development plans or any conditions applied by planning commission and city council. And there are no other conditions that apply to this property besides the land development code. And we will adhere to the land development code requirements. Are we consistent with the Arvada comprehensive plan? The property is identified there as a neighborhood or community, community commercial, which our, our use fits within that. So yes, we are in accordance with the, the comprehensive plan. Are we intent of the, of zoning district in which it is located? And yes, a continuing care facility is a unique zoning designation because of the residential and commercial components of the facility, as I mentioned several times. And the, and the characteristics of the proposed development and the operations of the facility are consistent with those in the CG, CG Zone District and as identified in the, in the LDC. I would offer even, it's even more applicable than what's allowed by the CD, CG Zone District because it is a residential and a, and a, and a commercial use, which makes it a very good transitional use. So then item number four, which is, and I will focus on this one a little bit longer than the others because I, I think it's a very important condition. It says the size, scale, height, density, multimodal traffic impacts, hours of operation, and other similar, similar characteristics of the proposed use are comparable with existing and planned uses in the surrounding area. So there are specific sections in the land development code that sets forth those characteristics. And specifically, Article 4.6 talks about landscaping and buffering. We meet those requirements. 4.7, fences and walls, exterior lighting. We've actually cut off our, our lighting at the property line. Code requires you can go down to a half-foot candle. We've opted to cut that off at property line. We've also put in, or agreed with our neighbors to the west that we will heavily landscape that, that turn... that, that turn movement at Old McIntyre. We've even offered to relocate their, the Westwood Ridge Monument sign from the corner of 63rd and McIntyre and put it at the corner of Old McIntyre and 63rd because that could actually also work as a headlight barrier from our neighbors, our neighbors to the west. So we've offered to them to do that. Again, speaking, we truly believe that our use is a transitional use between residential and commercial. And the, the characteristics fit well between the adjacent residential and the high-density commercial to our north. The size, scale, and the height of the building are consistent with or less than the retail center to the north. Because the way that that, that facility is elevated, up above 63rd, the height of our building will be consistent with the height of that retail center just north of 63rd Avenue. We've stepped down the building on the, on the western edge, 17 feet lower than our neighbors to the west. The hours of operation are very comparable to a residential use and are significantly less than the retail center. One of the advantageous characteristics of this facility, which Curtis talked about, is that we will generate less, less traffic than our commercial neighbor as well as our residential neighbor. Our residential neighbor generates, on average, 10 trips per day. Our facility will generate much less than that. So that leads towards, that's item number four. Item number five speaks about the utilities and if the property can be served with what exists out there today. We have met with and talked with the Water and Sewer District, as well as Excel and others, and the facility can be served with those utilities. And then the final item, item number six, is the application, the application mitigates any adverse impacts on the surrounding area to the degree practicable. So adverse impacts to the, to the degree practicable. We do not believe that the project presents adverse impact to the surrounding area, especially no more than the allowed commercial use on the property. For example, traffic counts for a daycare or other type of commercial use that could be located there, our traffic counts are less than that. As far as the heights go, a hotel and office building, I expect that they would want to maximize their height, up to the 45-foot height, which is allowed in that Zone District, whereas we're currently at 37 feet, 10 inches. So we would actually be less than what is, what we expect would be proposed with a hotel and office building. We also feel that the use is consistent with the appropriate, with the comprehensive plan. The height, scale, and density are within, lower or less than the use by right criteria of the CG Zone District and the retail and neighbors surrounding us. The proposed use is compatible with existing and planned uses in the surrounding area, and we're designated in development to be conscious of our neighbors. It's being designed for that purpose, to be conscious of our neighbors, such as the stepping down, as I've talked about several times, and the light levels, as well as the traffic that we will be generating. So I'm going to stop there, but yet myself and my team are here to answer any questions. And I look forward to hearing discussion and answering your questions. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll move on. I understand we have some organized presentations from the HOAs. So I'm not quite sure from the sign-up sheets I have which ones those are, so if they could simply come forward. I understand that they've, what, agreed to a 20-minute timeframe to present the total of their presentation. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Three will be present and one will be over Zoom.
Okay, fine. So why don't we have those three present first?
So hi, my name is Lori Irish, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Lakes of Westwood subdivision. We're located just east of the proposed construction site of this project. I would like to express our opposition to the project as currently designed. It's a four-story, 120-unit assisted living and memory care facility, and you all saw kind of where it's located and how it's positioned. So for the record, we would like to mention that we don't believe that the project process was followed. The developer's initial design did not comply with the Arvada land development code in effect at the time. Their second submittal was expected to address numerous concerns from the neighboring communities and be revised to comply with the LDC. However, the developer delayed that submission until after Arvada revised their LDC to avoid obtaining multiple variances for construction. Once the LDC was revised, the developer was allowed to submit and proceed with their project. They were not required to restart the process or resubmit any information per established protocol as far as we know. The developer has talked about the conditional use approval required for this project. And as he mentioned, the planning commission recommended approval in early July, but we believe the project fails to meet two of the criteria, specifically criteria four and criteria six for conditional use. So with respect to criteria four, we feel that the project does not meet this requirement because the size, scale, height, and traffic impacts are not comparable with existing and planned uses in the surrounding area. While the developer says the structure is transitional, we do not believe it is. As currently designed, the structure is significantly larger in size, scale, and density from everything around it. It doesn't share the same setback from the main streets as all the other commercial and residential buildings in the area, and it also doesn't share any aesthetics or architectural details with neighboring residential or commercial buildings. And I would like to make the point that this is especially true if you view it from the east side. So if you're looking west and you view it from the east. The data for the traffic study is questionable. One of my colleagues will address that. The street McIntyre is a very busy street, probably more busy than what I think the data has suggested. I'd also like to point out that we feel that the project fails to meet criteria six for conditional use because adverse impacts to the surrounding area were not mitigated to the degree practicable. The Westwoods Ridge Task Force did a wonderful, very comprehensive position paper and identified numerous adverse impacts of this project to the city and the city council, and they've worked on it probably for the past year. To date, the developer has not been required to revise or redesign this project or to make any other serious attempt at mitigating these adverse impacts. We have felt that the community's concerns have gone largely unacknowledged and unaddressed. And one final point that I would like to make, I think we have now become aware that there is only a 500-foot requirement for notification, 500-foot radius around the site of the project. For a project of this size and a building of this stature, that radius is insufficient to mitigate adverse impacts. I only live about a quarter of a mile east of this building. I didn't even know about this project until last month. Nobody in our subdivision was aware of it. And because, because of the size, because of the height, because of the, just the stature of it, it will be visible from easily, you know, farther away from, than from where my subdivision is located. So in closing, I'd just like to say that we request the city council seriously consider the feedback received to date, including all the comments in this meeting, enforce conditional use criteria four and six, deny the conditional use approval, and suspend construction until the project is modified or redesigned to comply. The last point I'd like to make is we are not against construction in this area, and I think even a continuing, you know, kind of assisted living memory care facility is, it could be a really great use for this site, but we feel that the, the building itself does not meet criteria four and six, does not fit in with our existing community, and we would sincerely like you to consider the points that we bring up this evening. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening, council members. Mr. Mayor, my name is Bob Olson, and I am the president of the Lakes at Westwoods HOA. Lori, who just spoke, is one of our, her and her husband are one of the owners in our community. And we are accessed via 63rd Avenue from the McIntyre 63rd intersection. So we are to the east of McIntyre and would be looking westward at the proposed development. I want to open by saying, affirming what Lori just said. We're not opposed to development of the property. We would anticipate that development would occur on the property anyway. We're certainly not opposed to a senior living facility. What we are overwhelmingly opposed to is a four-story building that we think is not consistent with the character of surrounding communities and surrounding development. That is the basis for our objections for the development. Some will talk a little bit about the building and the site development, as Lori did. I want to talk about traffic. And we heard from the traffic consultant for, for United Properties, et cetera. Traffic as it exists today at the intersection of McIntyre and 63rd Avenue and the traffic impact of adding another development, which will predominantly, if not only, use that intersection for access to and from that development. 63rd and McIntyre is the intersection that provides the only entrances and the only exit to three residential communities. Westwoods Ridge, which Lynn will speak to that in a few minutes, that's a 52-home, single-family development. Westwood Villas is 135 townhome communities. And the Lakes at Westwoods, which I represent, is again 46 single-family homes. All of us use the intersection at McIntyre and 63rd for any, any entrance into our communities and any exit from our communities. Our viewpoint is the possibility of adding another development, 120 units of assisted living and residential, assisted living and memory care facility, will only place additional burden on an intersection, which from our point of view is already stressed based on traffic movement from three residential communities. So we have concerns about that. Our understanding is the development would create 60 to 70 full and part-time employment positions. It certainly would create traffic for food and beverage services with a frequent basis, trash collection, general delivery, and potentially emergency vehicle requirements at the facility as well. So we have concerns about that traffic. We understand there's an emergency exit or whatever for the proposed community, but our understanding is that virtually all daily traffic, evening traffic, would travel through the intersection of 63rd and McIntyre. Regarding the traffic study, don't disagree with the data that was presented. Our understanding is on one day, October 9th of 2019, the developer's consultant collected data, which became a traffic impact study, and it was involved in turning movements at the intersection of 63rd and McIntyre. Turning movements for those who are on McIntyre, exiting either to the west or to the east onto 63rd. Turning movements from those who are trying to enter McIntyre from either 63rd to the west or the east. They calculated wait times for vehicles and determined that the wait times were not considered to be excessive. Therefore, the possibility of a traffic light or other traffic management mechanisms were not considered necessary for the development. Our concern is that the data was collected on one day, and it was collected while McIntyre was at the height of construction. There was a bridge development going on on McIntyre. There's been widening activity going on on McIntyre Parkway for the last couple of years. And the delay, the data was collected, in our point of view, clearly at a time when those who prefer to travel that corridor had already made their alternative decisions, detours, to probably avoid the construction activity at McIntyre and were using other roadways to get wherever those people chose to get to. So we are concerned about the data points that are used to determine that no signal light or other mechanisms are necessary at the intersection of 63rd and McIntyre. What we do know is happening is that traffic volumes are up and speeds are up in that area. There is frequent speed traps that are now set up there. Arvada law enforcement sets up speeds. They take people frequently on McIntyre, traveling northbound primarily at speeds that are in excess of 40, probably approaching 50 miles per hour. We know because those people are turned into the 63rd Avenue side street for citation purposes. And there was actually citation activity going on today because one of the residents at Westwood Villas spoke to a law enforcement person who was issuing citations and indicated that the rate of speed is excessive and the traffic volume has increased considerably through that area and through the intersection, and that is really is appropriate to look at ways to slow down traffic and manage traffic more safely, more efficiently, and effectively through that intersection. I will say additionally, crossing McIntyre by foot or by bicycle at the 63rd Avenue intersection is precarious. I ride bike and I cross that intersection frequently, and I will tell you that I find it difficult, dangerous to get across the intersection of 63rd and McIntyre today. Our community's position is that the developer's traffic survey lacks sufficient data and completeness to conclude that no traffic light or other traffic management mechanisms are needed at 63rd and McIntyre if this development were to proceed as proposed. We oppose the development without further traffic analysis and development of a traffic management plan that we should, we believe should address increased traffic, speed, and safety concerns that already exist and can only be compounded by an additional development at that intersection. Thank you for your time. We hope you'll take our comments into consideration as you consider the future of this development as it is proposed. Thank you.
You certainly will. Thank you.
Honorable mayor and city council, my name is Lynn Clemens. I am the Westwood Villas HOA president. We have 135 units located at West 63rd and McIntyre. My, my comments will address some specifics out of the Arvada comprehensive plan to show that the Cherrywood Point project is not consistent with and appropriate to the comprehensive plan here in Arvada. And I've taken these specific citations out of the 2017 implementation updates. Section CC, Community Character, Urban Design, and Historic Preservation, the goal is to plan Arvada as a city of different development character districts. And CC 1.3 is compatible infill, encourage infill that is compatible with scale and character of existing neighborhoods. Clearly, this is not compatible with the existing neighborhood. The density and the scale of Cherrywood is 26.8 versus 2.6 for the existing houses and seven for Westwood Villas condos. Also, it does not enrich the district's character with a proposed four-story building when the surrounding neighborhoods are two stories. In addition, CC 1.4 says work with stakeholders, and many of the neighbor concerns have not been addressed or glossed over, and I requested a full east-facing rendering from United, and that was denied. Goal CC-2, establish and maintain Arvada's distinct qualities and small-town identity. CC 2.3, city gateways, provide and maintain attractive city gateways. Although McIntyre Parkway is not identified as an official city gateway, it is a main gateway for Arvada residents west of Ward Road. It's a leading corridor for all West Arvada residents using A70. A four-story building will not be attractive along this busy parkway, so this has more impact for all West Arvada residents beyond the three neighborhoods we're talking about. Goal CC-3, identify places and assets that are unique and important to the community and work to preserve them. CC 3.1, attractive street corridors. Obviously, there is nothing about the east end of this four-story building that borders McIntyre Parkway that will preserve the local character of this area and make it more attractive. City staff have repeatedly told citizens that we should have no expectations of protected views of the mountains. However, CC 3.2, view corridors, identify and maintain appropriate view corridors from public streets and other public places as new development occurs. And CC 3.5, lower densities toward the mountains. Ensure decrease in overall density in western parts of the city while allowing for higher densities in the Jefferson Center and other areas identified on the land use plan. This multi-story building will obscure any view of the western mountains from the east side of McIntyre where my condos are located. There is a public park called Broad Lake east of McIntyre and West 63rd, which definitely will have its views obscured. The comprehensive plan specifically calls for lower densities in the western part of the city, which this location in the western part of the city, which this location fits. However, the Cherrywood Point project does not fulfill lower densities. Goal N4, I found very interesting, provide opportunities for special needs and senior housing in Arvada. N4.2, address neighborhood concerns. Require special needs and senior housing developments in residential areas. Consider the concerns of neighborhoods and address any concerns of compatibility. Although this is not designated residential, let's face it, it is a residence since it's housing senior citizens who have various care needs. We're not opposed to this use. It's just the density, scale, and size of the structure are not compatible with the, with the surrounding neighborhoods. One more point, the LDC has not addressed this issue, as noted in the 2017 update of the Comprehensive Plan. The action item should have been review and amend the LDC to include standards and processes that address the new special needs senior housing projects are compatible with existing neighborhoods. Had this action item been addressed in the new LDC, this project may have never come to City Council. Three other issues for your consideration out of the LDC. Page four, the purpose and intent, and there are a number of them listed, but I'm going to move down to number five and six. Five is protect the quality and character of the stable residential neighborhoods. And six is to promote the economic development and fiscal sustainability of the city. Please note that protection of the neighborhoods comes before the fiscal economics of the city. And then LDC, page 83, which is the commercial general purpose. This, we're supposed to be serving both neighborhood and area-wide needs. The zoning district is typically situated along material streets or where other appropriate high-volume vehicular access is available. Although this property is zoned commercial, the way the building is positioned on the property is it is not utilizing the high-volume vehicular access that is available. Instead, it is overburdening not one, but two local streets that essentially have only one outlet. In addition, what, what's area-wide need is being served? Since Morning Star is less than two miles away, it has 112 independent and assisted living units and 29 memory care units. Do we really need another project like this in west Arvada? And my last point is double-frontage lots. And the point was made that there are three fronts to this. There are not three fronts. The front faces west, Old McIntyre. The back faces the east, which is where my condos are. And there should be a 37, the LDC says there should be a 37-foot setback in the back, in the rear piece of the property, which is the McIntyre side. And that is not being addressed through the LDC. And I, I disagree that a patio is not a front door. The front door is actually facing west. And we are facing the rear part of the building, which is right up against McIntyre. For all these reasons, I cited, I contend that Cherrywood is not consistent with the appropriate Comprehensive Plan here in Arvada and that you deny the conditional use for this property. Thank you for the consideration of our concerns. And I think we have one more, one more remote speaker.
Yeah, we have Kay Reese. Ms. Reese, you can unmute and speak.
And Ms. Reese, your predecessors have taken up a portion of your time. I'm going to give you five minutes if you need that.
That's plenty. My name is Kay Reese. I represent Westwoods Ridge, not Westwoods Village. I want to correct Eric there. We are the development directly to the west of the proposed Cherrywood Village. We also formed a task force and created the 18-page document that you all have in your packet. So I don't feel the need to go into any more detail. I think that document addressed very specifically all of our issues. I have two points I want to make. The first is that I think it's important that we define clearly that this is not just another case of not in my backyard. Westwood Ridge is a 20-year-plus development, 52 homes, single-family homes. We have not had any opposition to the continued development of the Westwood Center to our north, to Westwood Villas, to the lakes, to Ryan's Ranch, to Boyd Pond. All of those developments have come to us and surrounded us within the last 20 years. There has been no organized opposition to that development. This opposition is unanimous for all of the homeowners in our area. So I just wanted to make sure everybody knows that we are not opposed to development on that lot. As has been said many times before, it's the mass and the, the issues that come with that. My second and last point is that during the past years, I worked with my neighbors and the Westwood Ridge Task Force. We had multiple opportunities to speak with many of the city leaders and employees and exchange thoughts and opinions about this project. One comment was repeated to me and our group on several occasions, the most recent being at Planning Commission. And that is, you should welcome this development into your neighborhood because it could be worse. I was struck by that comment on many levels. I hope that this is not a new decision-making criteria for the city. What happened to, we can do better. We can make decisions that serve the commercial needs of Arvada, but also represent our homeowners and our long-term homeowners. So I think the 500-plus voting residents of our three neighborhoods deserve a council vote that supports doing better for these constituents. Those are the two points that I wanted to make. And the rest of our issues are detailed in the document that we provided. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I had agreed that we would have an, a opportunity for the various HOAs to put together a presentation. We get, we went a little over the 20 minutes that was allocated to them. I thought that was appropriate because frankly, I think the developer went on a little longer than he should have. But we're going to go to three minutes time limit for the next speakers because they are not representing a group. And Ms. Miller, I'm going to ask you to, I understand Perry Hackwell is in chambers, if Perry Hackwell wishes to address council?
Yes, so before, before I start, I just want, want to thank you guys. I wasn't aware of this project till just recently. And in that short amount of time, I'm sure I've pestered a few of you already. I'm going to make three points in three minutes. But before that, I want to say that we walked our subdivision, my wife and I. And of the 45 houses, we got 39 signatures opposing this project. The, the response was overwhelmingly against this. Several had not even heard of this project, and most of them were upset when they heard about it. The project violates criteria four of the conditional use permit granted by Arvada's Planning Commission on July 7th. The size is larger than anything nearby. Elevation comparisons to the next-door fitness center were made by the builder, but they failed to take into account single-family residents east, west, and south. From street elevation, McIntyre, this building is over 50 feet tall. So this is more than two stories taller than the condominiums on the next, next door, which are two stories tall, but below street elevation. So this is actually more than two and a half stories taller than their next-door neighbors. With the density of over 26 people per acre, this is out of place with the surrounding neighborhoods. Point two, the project violates criteria six. I'm not going to repeat the code because you guys know it at this point. The builder has offered the most minimal solutions possible. A few plants, offering to scoop sidewalks where it blocks the sun. A few berms, moving a trap, moving a sign. There's no traffic roundabout, no light, not even a turn lane. A few berms and trees will not mitigate the impact of traffic lights, noise, and the building blocking mountain views. There was no attempt to sink the building below street elevation. Claim that the water table is high may not be true because I looked up the USGS well data just north and south of this site. One of them was 340 feet below surface level, and the other one's 431. And if you look, the condos are actually sunken below McIntyre. And if you look at those condos at 64th and McIntyre, those are sunken as well. So I think there, there was a missed opportunity there. The building is set parallel to the mountains as opposed to perpendicular, so they block as much of that view as possible. Builder did not follow the process, and there's an appearance that they are not acting in good faith. Appears that the submission process was not followed selectively in favor of the builder and that the developer was allowed to let the initial proposal expire and did not have to start over after expiring. It's obvious that the two subdivisions just east of the project site are impacted since it's the only street in and out of that subdivision, but they were never notified. If the builder had spent a little extra time, they could have known that. Builders claiming that commercial due to a kitchen that has employees, but that's, that's a stretch by anyone's imagination. Thank you. Oh, I had signatures, sorry. So they're in the packet.
Mr. Mayor, you're muted.
Thank you. Sharon Aragi.
Yes, good evening. I'm Sharon Aragi, and I'm from the Westwoods Ridge HOA, the one that abuts directly this development. I speak in opposition to the Cherrywood senior development. I was opposed to the project from the first meeting on October 3rd when United Development tried to convince us that our property values were going to increase. After that, I contacted all the people on our two cul-de-sacs, which are directly, I mean, directly behind the development project, at which time we had a meeting and to discuss where we were going to be impacted. At that time, I looked up some research and found an article, which I have presented to you folks, on how, exactly how we could be impacted negatively and positively. One of the documents indicated that the closer to the development, the greater the negative impact would be on us. Factors that would affect our home values were noise, living on a busy street, streets that make it difficult to make left-hand turns, developments that affect our views, et cetera. All of those were going to impact my HOA. The Westwoods Ridge is further complicated by the fact that we have no exit to our development. Here's McIntyre, here's 63rd Avenue. We are hammed in. There was, let's say, an accident on 63rd Street. We have no, no way out. I was unable to attend the Planning Commission meeting on July 7th, but did read the minutes from that meeting. I have to say that the process I thought was questionable. And I found two questions I had after reading that. How could all 10 speakers from three different neighborhoods speak against the development, presenting an abundance of evidence and research that we've all gathered? And how could the Planning Commission, in a very short period of time, vote almost unanimously to approve that project? I remain still, I remain opposed at the beginning of this. I remain opposed at the end. And I think the residents of all the HOAs that were, are going to be impacted on that have provided ample evidence, research, scientific evidence, that this is not a good place for our, for the development to be built in our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone who has signed up to speak on this issue?
Not in chambers. We have someone.
Is there anybody by Zoom?
Yes.
Okay, let's take the Zoom calls.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, our first speaker is Cindy Whitehead. Ms. Whitehead, you have the floor for three minutes.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Councilor. I am a resident at Westwood Village, and my condo is directly affected by this building. And the United Properties has failed, as what Lynn had mentioned, to give us drawings or openings of the east side. The elevation of the property from, from our condos to the elevation across the street is way higher. So this building that they're going to be building is not really going to be a four-story building. It's going to be a mammoth of a building. That's probably going to look like a five- or six-story apartment building. So I'm objecting to the conditional use permit because I feel that it is going to impact all the homeowners and the environment and the peace and tranquility of my residents. A lot of this is also related to traffic. I have a lot of problems turning left from 63rd onto McIntyre to this day. I believe that the traffic study is not, is not valid. Plus, they are saying that they have 60, 50 to 60, 70 people that are going to be working full-time jobs working there. They don't have enough parking in the parking area to, let alone have, for those workers, let alone for visitors, for that amount of employees in the parking structure. The speeding has just been absolutely horrendous with the amount of cars driving 60 miles an hour. I've had cars, cars and motorcycles, I mean, just absolutely awful on the, on the street. So the visual impact of a four-story building doesn't suit the rest of the neighborhood. If they reduce it down to a two-story building, looking from the east, it will probably look like a three- or four-story building. But the fact that it's going to be a four-story looking like a six-story is not, is not amenable to the, to the area. So, and secondly, United Properties, last week was the first time I've ever received one piece of information about this building project. I've never received anything in the mail. I expressed in July that I had not received any information. And now I have got one piece, a letter from them. And all the, my information has been gained from other residents within Westwood Villas. I'd like to see the prairie dog issue resolved, and I'd like to request the city revoke the builder's conditional permit until they comply with all the conditional use criteria. We have also signed a petition from Westwood Villas, which I think Lynn has submitted to the county, City Council office, and would like to ask you to review that as well. And that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. Julie Gleason in chambers, if you would like to address City Council.
Hello. I also just learned about this project and seeing some opposition in neighborhood site, which is why I decided to come here to speak in favor of it. Probably one of the few people. The reason is because I have some, some experience with living next to an assisted living facility. When I was in Golden, I lived right next to a lot that was developed right there. It was a seven-acre lot. And I was concerned about my home values. I was concerned about a lot of things, but it turns out that I was actually good for my home value. It actually was a huge improvement on the neighborhood than an empty lot. And it, it was better for the community. It was nice to see the residents get out and take walks within the community. That does bring up one concern I have with Broad Lake Park across the street. They are going to want to go across the street to that park because it's a nice park. And you are going to end up with dead old people if you don't put something there to actually assist them in crossing, I promise you. So I would like to see something to mitigate that risk. Whether or not a light is necessary, I mean, the community seems to think that's the case. But perhaps if you can't do a lighter, some sort of boulder-like flashing pedestrian, "Don't hit the old people" would be fabulous. So I think that's about all. So I think that's about all I have to say about that. I can't speak to like the elevation or those types of concerns, but I did have a couple of green building classes, and we know that infill is a really good idea. We know that our population is aging, and so we should have more assisted living. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, our next, yes, Cindy White. Sorry, Ms. White, go ahead.
Thank you. You have three minutes. Bruce, I'm not hearing her.
She is unmuted. I'm sure we're not hearing her. Ms. White, are you there?
Let's move on and come back to her.
Next is Howard Small. Mr. Small?
Hi there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council members. I live in the lakes at Westwoods. The only way to exit and enter our neighborhood is on 63rd Avenue. As we leave our neighborhood, we will be looking directly at the four-story portion of this building, and it will in fact be blocking views, mountain views. I'm opposed to the Cherry Point Village, or the Cherry Point Building in its current proposed iteration. For the record, I'm not necessarily opposed to growth in Arvada or a facility in this location. I am opposed to buildings, businesses, and growth that are not consistent with the specific area. Mr. Chekel mentioned that this building will be similar to the shopping area, the Westwoods Shopping Area. In fact, that would be, I completely disagree. This will be the only 24-hour commercial, as he has pointed out numerous times, building in the area. The only thing that is 24 hours is a single drive-through bank teller machine. Also, this is not congruent with the Arvada citizens' wants, needs, desires, or safety, and placating to a developer and real estate investment group, including United Properties, is against the citizens' desire, and it's simply not okay. If you could show my slide number one, please. The initial concept, no, that would be not the first one. That would be not number one. I believe that's number five or six. In any event, the initial concept for this building was specifically a smaller profile of two-to-three-story building, and that was what was submitted in the rendering. That would be it. So, in any event, Mr. Chekel said that this building was always going to be 120 units, which the documents on the website that were submitted specifically say 80 units to a maximum of no more, to 111 units, and would fill up about a half to two-thirds of the lot. Against the citizens' wishes, the land development code was changed midstream to allow for a building of 120 units utilizing the majority of the lot. More importantly, the building height was increased to four stories. And if you could show the next slide, please, number two. It's inconsistent with the neighborhood and any other building in our area. Even though United Properties' height is at the same elevation as the King Supers, they are voiding the fact that Westwood Shopping Area sits much higher, and this property sits Unfortunately, my time apparently is close to being up. I just wanted to also say that the 500-foot notification system is clearly not working. It discourages and avoids citizen participation. I don't believe that's in the spirit of the law, and Mr. Gay from the Planning Commission specifically said that in the meeting as well. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Next is Mark Whitworth. Mr. Whitworth, unmute and talk.
Yes, sir. My name is Mark Whitworth. I live at 6283 Kilmer Loop, number 206. That's at the Westwood Villas building directly west of the proposed development. Kind of four bullet points. The four-story building portion of it, it looks like it's going to be about two-thirds of the building. I think allowing that in that particular lot is a bad precedence for the city of Arvada going forward, especially in view of the fact that United Properties' representative has already been on record earlier saying he'd like to develop other units in the city of Arvada. Surrounding area, there are no four-story commercial buildings in the surrounding area other than First Bank, which is on 64th and Ward Road, and it was built in 1982. Other than that, there are absolutely no other four stories in the surrounding area. Why not three stories? Well, I would suspect that the developer and the builder wants to maximize. That's the only reason I would think that they would be trying to go forth with the building as it stands now. The building doesn't conform to the architecture or the design, the characteristics, the look and feel, the scale, the density of the building on the lot does not conform to the surrounding area clearly. I did not hear the original presenter state a amount of distance between the southwest corner of the building and McIntyre. I heard him talk about the west side, but as you can see by, I can see, it looks like it's maybe 70 feet or less from McIntyre. That's going to be a major eyesore for the city of Arvada. Again, we get into the density issue. Serious concerns regarding safety, pedestrians, bicyclists, motorists. I live 50 feet from that intersection on 63rd and McIntyre. I have heard nobody state the fact that there is a school bus drop-off on the northeast corner of that intersection. I have personally witnessed children running across that street and onto traffic, as I have other pedestrians that are going from the Broad Lake Park as well. I can guarantee you that there is going to be a serious problem if there is not a light at that intersection going forward at 63rd and McIntyre. That's posted at 35 miles an hour. Easily, cars are going 50-plus miles an hour at that intersection. When school buses are starting to pick up children on the northeast corner of 63rd and McIntyre, you're going to see some major problems there. Other than that, that particular intersection is the entryway to at least three subdivisions, and I don't see how it can be possible for...
Mr. Whitworth, I'm sorry you've reached your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have Melinda Maeda. Melinda, go ahead and unmute and you have the floor.
Good evening. Hi, I'd just like to express my opposition to this project for all of the reasons that you've been hearing this evening. I'm especially concerned about the height and density of the buildings and definitely the traffic implications. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, next we have Sam Maeda. Sam, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mayor Williams and council. I'm a 21-year resident of Westwoods Ridge HOA and lived here, and unfortunately, I've had two sets of parents in these type of senior care facilities. And I also would like to express my concern about the traffic and having a commercial access through what's been our residential entry. That is the entryway, or that's a pickup zone for all our young children with school buses, and allowing emergency vehicles to go in and out of that area would totally disturb the residents at all hours of the night, as well as the children that are working through their school hours. Stated earlier by another resident, they said there's about 90 parking spaces with maybe 25 employees working, maybe 50 employees working, and 120 residents. Well, with that kind of parking, there's obviously not going to be enough space, especially on weekends and holidays. As I've visited my parents, there's always been overfloor parking, which will fall on 63rd Avenue, which is not enough. And what really is needed is a secondary access to decompress the traffic if it's coming through 63rd. And I question why the polytrucking entrance isn't used as the main entrance and the 63rd Avenue entrance is used as maybe the emergency. My final point would be, please do not ignore the unified disapproval of this project because it is currently configured by all the surrounding HOAs. We all, as you can see, it's not approved by any of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, next we have Rex Emery. Mr. Emery, go ahead and unmute and address council.
My name is Rex Emery. I live at 15825 West 63rd in Westwoods Ridge. I just want to say that I agree with everybody that's spoken in opposition because of the height. In my opinion, this really, I'm going to make points that have not been made, except for one, which is the failed, honestly failed solicitation of the community's input as it relates to the land development code. I don't feel like the process with such a big event and change was advertised as well as it should have been for community input, especially in the west Arvada area. The second thing regarding utilities, I don't think anybody has mentioned yet. The water sewer, all those things are important, but internet access is important in today's society as well. And if you have heard other people speak in the past, our community still does not have access to like Comcast internet. So if you add another 120 people or units on to the utilities in that area, I would like to, I don't know if it's a city or developer issue, but that's something that needs to be addressed. I'll go ahead and piggyback on Sam's comments regarding the entrances and the need for two. And then regarding the trail system, my daughter was almost killed in that intersection. Her flip-flop fell off of her foot, and nobody, I mean, nobody stops. I mean, on the rare occasion, one in 100 stops. There's the bright yellow signs there that say, hey, you should be stopping because this is a crosswalk, it's a state law. Nobody stops, they proceed through at 50 miles an hour. So I almost got into an altercation, possibly even a fistfight with somebody that almost ran my daughter over. So you guys really should be thinking about looking at that closer, and that's really all I have for you tonight.
Sure, I'm glad your daughter's okay, and trust me, you have several council members who have her TDS. Next speaker.
We have Kay Lee. Ms. Lee, go ahead.
I'm Kay Lee. I live at 15013 West 63rd Avenue, and I agree with almost all the comments that have been made, so I won't repeat them. I have a couple of new things to say. One, about notification. I think notification was done badly because the address that is listed for this project is 15530 West 64th Avenue, which if you Google it, is in the middle of the Westwood Shopping Center. So 500 feet of that only leaves the ridge development needing notification and maybe one of the Westwoods Villa. So that might explain some of the bad notification issues. I also feel that nobody's put numbers on the monetary impact on the citizens, and there is a line item in my property tax bill that tells me that the value of my view is in the tens of thousands of dollars. So if my view goes away, that goes away, and so, yes, my property tax will go down, but the sales value of my house will also go down. So I am impacted in a monetary way over which I have little or no control. The third item I want to talk about is safety of this development. If you have, now, the builder has been very inconsistent in what is some of the things about the development in the address, which is strange, but also whether or not there's independent living. The first things say that there's independent living, and the other ones say that it's just assisted living and memory care. If you have that many people in a four-story building and there is a fire, there are not enough staff to get those people out, and people will die. A four-story building is not safe for that kind of residents. If you're trying to evacuate, you've got 24 memory care unit people that need to be taken care of so that they don't wander off in the event of a fire. And you also have, most people move into assisted living because of mobility issues. So in the event of a fire, elevators are not operational, and they have to, at best, go down two stories. The lowest level you can walk out of, the second level, the entry level you can walk out of, but those other two floors are people that are going to need assistance to get down, and in a fire, somebody's going to die. I also have safety concerns about the intersection. If some of the residents drive, they're, you know, as I age, my reaction time is less, and everybody in this neighborhood has a hard time getting through that intersection. And I've seen so many pedestrians, not just kids, but adults, almost get hit there because people don't slow down. Since the planning meeting, they've put up some flashing signs at the intersection, and thank you very much for doing that. The one on the northbound lane isn't soon enough because if people are speeding at 50 miles an hour, which is about the average speed there, if you go slower, people honk at you. You can't see the signs soon enough. Somebody's going to get killed at that intersection, whether it's a pedestrian, a bicyclist, or another car just trying to turn left. It is really dangerous. I have had to turn right because I can't make the left turn at that intersection and go and turn around up at the next stoplight.
Ma'am, sorry to interrupt, but you have passed three minutes, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next, we have Jordan Perkins. Jordan, go ahead and unmute and address.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for taking the time. I know it's late, so I'm going to be brief. My family and I actually moved out to this area of Arvada from Denver, mostly to escape the noise and some of the high-density population in the city. And, you know, for the last 18 months, we've really enjoyed living out here. And I've been on the call since about, you know, 7 o'clock this evening, and quite frankly, you know, some of what I've heard from my neighbors that I didn't even know previously is actually kind of scaring me about the intersection, in particular crossings McIntyre. I have a two-and-a-half-year-old son, I've got a daughter on the way, and the idea of having to worry about that and all the other things that are out there in the world today really gives me pause and makes me quite nervous. A few other things I do want to point out, my neighbor Sam pointed out the overflow that will inevitably flow onto 63rd Avenue where we live. Our HOA fees pay for a small private park that connects to the trail system, the Westwood Arvada Trail System, and we already have problems with neighboring HOAs coming over and utilizing our park, which increases our liability from an HOA perspective. So that would be a concern that I have. And then what some people may not know is there's actually a proposed land development for another 235 multi-use family homes over in North Temple Mountain called a Villa North. That's going to be their main access point to get over to I-70 and Colorado 58 to get downtown or up to Summit County for skiing and fun activities. It's going to be through, cut through some of the side streets that gets you from easily over onto McIntyre, so that will inevitably increase the traffic, which I'm not going to spend time pointing out the concerns over the traffic study because of when it was done, the time it was done, the fact that it's dated and completed before the expansion of McIntyre Avenue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
And last, we have David Lipson. Mr. Lipson.
Hello, my name is Dave Lipson. I live at 15765 West 63rd Avenue, and my property is in Westwood Ridge within about 600 feet of the planned development. I hold a doctoral degree in geological engineering from Colorado School of Mines. I've been teaching engineering there since 2003. I have the education, training, and experience to understand the strengths and limitations of engineering studies. The traffic study is outdated. Not only that, we raised this issue with the planning commission at the July 7th, 2020 Arvada Planning Commission meeting, and it was brushed over... Arvada Planning Commission meeting, and it was brushed over. The rebuttal response from United Properties was, well, we added a 50% fudge factor to account for the increased traffic. Well, frankly, a 50% fudge factor is improper when there are millions of dollars at stake, when the quality of life of hundreds of community members are at stake, and potentially when there are lives at stake. The traffic study needs to be redone. Now, I'm actually not really here to talk about that. I submitted my letter, you have it in the details, please read it when you're considering your decision. The real reason I want to speak tonight is to express my extreme dissatisfaction with the Arvada Planning Commission, who did not listen to the members of the community at their July 7, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. I raised serious concerns with the traffic study at that time, which included specific technical problems. These were not listened to. The rest of the comments by the community were not listened to. And the Arvada Planning Commission did not listen to a single member of our community who are all in opposition to this community, to this project. If the Planning Commission will not listen to members of their own community, it is imperative that this council hear us and give all appropriate consideration to our concerns. I thank you for your attention to my comments and trust you will act accordingly.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else that wishes to address during public comment?
I think that's everyone.
Thank you. Okay, for the applicant, I think you can tell my frustration with how much time you spent in your initial presentation. Frankly, you need a lesson in how to present to a city council in terms of hitting the high points. But how much time do you need for rebuttal?
I apologize for that, Mr. Mayor. I was actually going to let my traffic engineer speak for a minute, if that's okay.
I'm going to give you time, but I'm telling you, you've not made myself and other members of council very happy with how much time you took in your initial presentation.
Again, I apologize. Is 10 minutes okay?
10 minutes is fine. That's fine.
Okay. Curtis, are you still there? Would you like to address the traffic comments?
Sure. Yes, happy to. Again, Curtis Rowe with Kibbly Horn Associates. We prepared the traffic study for this project in accordance with City of Arvada standards. We actually enjoy working with the city staff on all the requirements for this study. We did begin the study in October of 2019. You know, projects begin at all times throughout the year and over the years. I've been doing this for 26 and a half years, and so they continuously occur. There are instances and timeframes when roadway may have some construction activity, like this one did with McIntyre Parkway being under construction to the south. And so what we did was we took traffic projections from Dr. Cog and Jefferson County to identify what their future projections are for that roadway, and that's our best tools available. It meets City of Arvada requirements for determining traffic volume on McIntyre. And so the approach of increasing traffic volumes by 53% to equal that future traffic projection is correct and the accurate way of preparing those traffic studies. It's typical. We always do turning movement counts that include vehicles, pedestrian, and bicycles during the peak hours for an average weekday. When we do those counts, we ensure, verify that there was no incident that occurs in the surrounding area. And if that is true, and that's the case, then that's representative of a typical count. And so that's the way it's always done. It's done that way actually in every jurisdiction in the Denver metro area, in the state of Colorado, and in the 15 states where I've done traffic impact studies.
Thank you.
Thank you, Curtis. So I'm just going to touch on a couple of the points that were made by the neighbors. I did want to point out that there's concern about traffic collection and trucks, so those numbers are included in the traffic study. So it's not just the employees that work there. And to note that Jeffrey touched on, there'll be 60 employees for this facility. They won't all be working at the same time. There's three shifts that happen throughout the day. So 90 stalls is more than adequate for the facility. The city code actually requires one stall per four beds, so that would be, you know, somewhere around 30, 30-plus stalls. So we have quite a few more than that, but yet we feel like they are screened by the building, and then they're also south, so they are away from the neighbors. Then other comments about the four-story building not being consistent with the neighbors. And again, just wanted to touch on again that the residential, I'm sorry, the retail community to our north. I understand that the, I've heard that the speeds are up on McIntyre. Curtis spoke to that a little bit. We've also talked with your city traffic department, and they're looking at ways of controlling that speed, but that's something that we cannot control. Let's see. Talked about the use not being transitional. We feel that the use is transitional. It's a mix between commercial and residential, which makes it, just by definition, a transitional use, much more transitional than what other commercial uses might be. So we do find that it is transitional. When it comes to density on the property, please do understand that we are providing 55% coverage of landscaping. So the way that it breaks down is the site is 55% landscape, about 22% footprint for the building, and then about 23% for parking. So that adds up to the 100%. So we do have quite a bit of landscaping. Our density is, density is not an item that's applied to for developments of this nature. It's not a residential development. It's a commercial development, so number of units per acre is not a calculation that's applied to this type of facility. Concerning the setback that was mentioned by Lynn Clemens off of McIntyre Parkway, I've talked with Rob Smetana about that as recent as this morning, and that's a misinterpretation of the code as it relates to that being required to be 37 feet, the height of our building. That does not apply to this type of use. And if Rob would speak, would like to speak more to that, I welcome him to speak more to that comment. I did want to apologize to Kay for misnaming her neighborhood. I've met with her enough that I should know that it's Westwood Ridge, so Kay, please do, please do forgive me. You mentioned your 18-page document that was written to the city after our submittal, our second submittal back earlier this year, back in, I believe it was February. Her submittal was made, or her letter was made in March. We did respond to that letter with a 10-page letter of our own that responded to not only our, the comments from the city, but also to the task force's comments. So we did respond to all of those comments within that document. And then, we then followed up with that subsequent meeting with her task force then in June after the remapping was completed. I also did want to talk about the accusation that we've been a dishonest developer. I think quite to the contrary. We started the process with the neighborhood meeting back last fall. We've been transparent. We've been transparent with staff. We've been transparent with the neighborhood, with the residential communities out here. We notified the 500-foot radius for the, for the neighborhood meetings that West Ridge or West Woods Lakes is outside that 500-foot radius, so they were not notified. So they are much further, I think the one lady said that they're a quarter of a mile to the east. So, no, we did not notify them. We weren't required to. If I would have known that they had objection because of our transparency, I would have been happy to sit down with them. I've met with several people out here over the last year, and I want you to firmly believe that we are a transparent developer. As far as the address goes, that was an address off of 64th that was provided to us by the city. That has nothing to do with the way that we notify the surrounding neighbors. The way that we notify is we, as directed by the city, we take our property, and then you draw a 500-foot radius around from the perimeter of our property, and then where that line hits is how we go onto the Jefferson County website, and then all the properties that are within that radius, that's who we notify. I even asked our assistant in the office to go an extra 100 feet, to make sure that we captured everybody, okay? And so there are numerous people on that list. We've submitted it to the city. I've certified and myself that we've done proper notification, but we've met the requirements of Arvada when it comes to notification. Again, I can't say enough that we have really been as transparent as we can be. The process, when we started, we were in a PUD amendment process, so we had to go through a PDP document. And then we knew that this remapping was coming, but we weren't certain if it was going to be completed by the time we wanted to complete our process. So halfway into our process, been talking with Rob Smetana quite a bit about it, as well as Ryan, and you guys are making great strides with the remapping. So we had discussions with Rob, and he said, and we said, should we just hold off for a month and make sure, see if the remapping is going to be progressing, and then we'll pivot to that process instead? And that was the decision that was made, not only by ourselves, but in communications with staff. We did, once that process was decided upon, we did make the submittal for the conditional use, which is what the remapping required. There was no intentional delay. I mean, as far as we're concerned, we wanted to get through the process as quick as we could. So we followed the lead of the city on our process. So I'm, I just wanted to share that. As far as the water table goes, we were notified by the West Woods Ridge neighborhood that there's a high-water table. So there is a high-water table out here, so it is true, as well as our geotechnical engineer has told us that it's true. As far as property values go, I would never claim that somebody's property values are either going to go up or they're going to go down. That's not my business. I would never make that claim. So, you know, forgive me, but that's not, that's not factual. And I did want to talk to if there, God forbid, if there is an accident on 63rd and McIntyre with this development, we are providing that secondary point of access. So we're more than happy for anybody in our, you know, in the neighborhood to the west of us to be able to drive through our property and utilize that emergency access to tie into the trucking route. So that would provide a secondary access for our neighbors to the west by us putting in that, by us putting, developing and putting in that access point. The flashing pedestrian sign that the one lady recommended, I think that's a great idea, to put in a flashing pedestrian sign crossing McIntyre. I'd be happy to have Curtis reach out to your traffic department, and he can, you know, help them or come up with a good design for that. I'm happy to work with your traffic division on that. The one gentleman was showing some slides. He showed a slide number one that, that's a slide that I've never even seen before. He said that there was proposed to be 80 units or whatever that might be. That's a slide I'd never, I've never seen. Was that someone with the, you know, we don't own the property, it's owned by two other gentlemen who since have become our joint venture partner, but maybe they had somebody else prior to us that that plan or elevation was submitted? But again, I've never seen that before. The other slide that he mistakenly put up, that was Belfour Senior Living. That's a development that I developed. It's a beautiful development down in Littleton. I, I don't know if you got a chance to look at that, but it is a marvelous development, fully occupied, really nice architecture. It's very successful, it does quite well. I expect the same type of development here. I expect within three years, which is our stabilization period, for this development to be fully occupied, all 120 units. There is no confusion for the number of, or the type of resident that will be living here. It's not an independent living facility. It's a fully licensed 120-unit facility that will house people that are 80 years old or older, either in a memory care, the 24 units, or 96 residents within our assisted living. Very few people, very few of these people will drive. Very, very few will be driving. So I understand the concerns at the intersection, but again, this use that we're proposing generates the least amount of traffic of any other type of use allowed within the CG Zone District. So, you know, I'm, I just want to make that point, that we feel very confident, because I'm hearing a lot of concerns about traffic here, but we're confident that the use that we're proposing will generate the least amount of traffic. Let's see.
Much more you got, sir?
I'm sorry, sir?
How much more do you have?
I think I've touched on everything, Mr. Mayor. And again, I do apologize, I didn't realize there was a time limit on my initial presentation, so I do apologize.
I wouldn't say there was a time limit, I don't know that you used your time as efficiently as you could have. And that's just coming from an attorney who, who has to make opening and closing statements and make presentations to courts and juries, so.
Well, I appreciate that, sir.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you, and I'm sure we will cover whatever other points you might have in our questions. Counsel, do you need a break?
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay, let's take a short break, come back, we'll open it up for council questions and action. Thank you. Ben, I know this is not how you wanted to spend your birthday, but happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Ben.
We're going to sing for you later.
What the gift might be that we not sing for you.
Everybody's back and accounted for.
Thank you. We'll reconvene. I'll close the public testimony portion, the rebuttal, the presentation, open it up for city council questions and action. Ms. Miller, who wishes to speak?
Councilmember John Marriott and Councilmember Bob Pfeifer, Councilmember David Jones.
Okay, Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a couple of questions here, some for city staff and maybe a couple of others. I want to start with a question for the city staff and wanted to ask you a question or two about the purpose of a traffic study for a development like that. Mr. Smetana, do you have a, can you give us some guidance on, or Ms. Wolfshlag, either one, a guidance on exactly why for an application like this, a traffic study might be done and what kinds of things we're looking for out of a traffic study?
Let me, I can first start out about why we would request one, and then Jenny can talk about the details. But we would typically, in this instance, we wanted a traffic study just to verify whether this would have a significant impact on the intersection or not. So we did ask them to do at least a preliminary traffic review and let us know what numbers they came up with and compare it to other uses that would be permitted on this site. And Jenny may want to add a little more about the details.
Sure. You know, as Rob said, we requested a traffic study to see that this development is providing traffic that is consistent with other uses that would be allowed on this site, since it's a conditional use permit, and how those relate to the overall area and the traffic in the general area so that we could see if they triggered any off-site improvement. In this case, they did not. You know, the traffic in this, in this study showed a very minimal increase overall to the traffic, because the traffic counts for this use are generally low, as the traffic engineer for the developer explained. And so, you know, this development really isn't contributing enough traffic to warrant any improvements or modifications to the intersection at 63rd and McIntyre. You know, to further on that, our traffic division does monitor the traffic citywide on an ongoing basis, and the city could study that intersection on their own, and they will, to determine if any other improvements may need to be made in the future. But as this traffic study showed, no improvements are necessary due to this development.
Okay, thank you. So let me just have a little bit of for instance here. I think I understand on a situation like this, if this development were a 500-home subdivision or something like that, where the traffic by the subdivision would then create enough additional traffic that kicked in the requirement for lights or different mitigations or extra lanes or whatever it might be, that it would be then the development's responsibility to either pay for or contribute to those types of devices. But there's also the case where just through population growth or natural trends, that some streets get busier and require some devices that don't exist there now. And that's not the last guy that happened to develop something there's responsibility. That just becomes the city's responsibility. Is that all correct?
Yes, that's accurate.
Okay, got it. Okay, thank you for that about the traffic. I wanted to ask Mr. Smetana a question about the process a little bit. So this is being developed under the designation in the New Land Development Code as a conditional use, but it could have been developed as a PUD. Is there anything about this proposal that would have not been up for approval if it had been brought forward as a PUD as opposed to a conditional use permit under the new designation?
That's maybe a little bit difficult to evaluate, because we never went through the full PUD process, so I can't tell you exactly how close or not close it was to meeting the PUD standards under the old code. But, you know, it does, they are not asking for any waivers from the new code as part of this application, and I imagine that would have been the same potentially had we reviewed the full PUD aspect. But one thing we tried to do with the New Land Development Code was take all those past council decisions on PUDs and make sure we objectively address them in the code to the best of our ability through the code. So hopefully, what we ended up with in terms of building design, parking requirements, landscape requirements, were all consistent with past council decisions on PUDs as well as in standard zone districts.
Okay. I know my, my understanding of it was, as we applied these new zone districts with the adoption of the New Land Development Code, is that we were neither upzoning or downzoning properties that in general we were trying to apply as similar as possible, given that it was different to each and every parcel. And I believe that was the case here as well.
That's correct. This property was on PUD BPR, so it allowed a mix of uses on the property under the previous PUD zoning.
Right, okay, like it does now. Okay, so let me ask just another quick couple of questions. So the, is street parking currently allowed on West 63rd Avenue west of McIntyre?
I believe it is. It is a local street, and we do allow on-street parking on local streets.
Okay. And that will continue with this, or the plan is for that to continue if this development were to happen. There's no change there, correct?
That's correct. I'm not aware of any traffic engineering issues that would require a restriction on that.
Okay, thank you. One other thing I want to disclose, number one, I've visited the site, as the mayor said earlier, a number of us did that. I visited with city staff members. And one of the things that I noticed or that we talked about quickly when we were there was the sidewalk along West 63rd Avenue that currently it's an attached sidewalk, but, and this is a question for the applicant, if you will, sir, if you want to come on up, the plan looks to me like that that sidewalk will be removed and a detached sidewalk will be put in its place? Talking about the sidewalk along West 63rd Avenue.
West, yes, that sidewalk, definitely, yes. We'll remove that and replace it.
Okay. And so that sidewalk will get off the street and have a little bit, have a little more buffer.
Yeah, the tree lawn between the sidewalk and the back of curb. Yes, sir.
Got it, okay. I think that's all I have for questions. Thank you very much. That clarifies my questions and I will listen to my fellow councilmembers' questions.
Pfeifer?
Thank you, Mayor. So, kind of want to separate these up, as we're really talking about two subjects tonight, but Mr. Marriott brought up traffic impact fees. We're not doing any impact fees from this. I know it's a small impact, but sometimes I know we collect that once in a while. I'm not sure when we do that, but is there any of that going on with this development? That might go towards, say, a signal or improvement of pedestrian crossing in escrow?
There are not any traffic improvement fees being collected for this development. After reviewing the traffic study, this development increased traffic by less than 2% overall.
Okay.
So we're not collecting anything.
No reason for that, right? And while we're talking about traffic for a minute here, and maybe Jenny, maybe you have some insight on it, but you know, they're widening, you know, McIntyre all the way down to Highway 58, to two lanes in each direction. There must be some anticipation of traffic volume for doing that, or maybe you can share the rationale for the county making it four lanes, if you have any insight. Do they see, do they see an increase in traffic coming down and that's why they widened it?
There is a substantial amount of traffic on McIntyre. I don't know specifically what Jefferson County's reasoning for widening it was, but I would suspect it's due to the increase in traffic volume in that area.
Okay, just wanted to double check your expertise on that. Has the traffic team looked at any pedestrian crossing improvements that you can share with us?
Our traffic team has gone out and looked at some traffic improvements recently. Some of the suggestions that came from the traffic study that was done from this project was to look at the pedestrian crosswalk there and increase some pedestrian notification. So flashers have been installed by Public Works there. Another recommendation out of the report was to remove some trees in the median on McIntyre Parkway as they were limiting visibility in slight triangles. So city staff acted on that very quickly, and the trees have been removed and those islands re-landscaped to ensure that proper visibility is at that intersection.
Those pad beacons were installed already?
Our Public Works team is working on some flashers there.
Okay, but they're not installed already? No.
I'm not 100% sure if they're in the ground or not. I know they're in the process of being.
Okay, thank you. I drove there yesterday and I didn't see anything. Usually new stuff pops up, but it catches my eye, I didn't catch it. All right, so I'll move into, so have, what are some of the, it could be for the applicant or it can be for our team here at the city. The truck route, the road there, any reason why not making Old McIntyre just contiguous all the way through, or was there some concerns about that? Because it kind of dips into a parking lot and then the emergency exit. What was some of the rationale and thinking around closing that emergency exit off on that truck route and/or not connecting Old McIntyre all the way through? Just making it a street all the way through?
Well, Old McIntyre does not connect through right now, it just stops.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure how that whole process went, because I believe part of Old McIntyre further south used to be, or was in, is in Jefferson County. So that road was stopped, and then there was an agreement put in place between the property owner, our property owner and Mr. Kelly to leave in that emergency access, where we're going to put emergency, and his trucking route. So that was agreed to stay there for him to continue the access to New McIntyre. There was never an intention on keeping that road to continue through to 63rd from McIntyre Parkway. Does that answer your question?
No.
I'm sorry.
I mean, you just told me you guys just never talked about it, so it's that simple? There was no thought at all put into making that a road throughput? I mean, I must, hold on real quick. Let me just go back to Jenny, maybe. Jenny, do we have the right-of-way? Do we own that right-of-way?
We do not own the full length of the right-of-way. We own the piece of right-of-way where they built their entrance road, but the full right-of-way was actually vacated when McIntyre Parkway was constructed years ago. And we did evaluate putting that road through or having them use that kind of southern access point, the Kelly Trucking access point, as one of their main entrance points. And city staff discouraged them from doing that because of the impacts that would have to vehicle movements. That would have pushed more of the vehicle traffics further south, which would have prevented a signal from ever being built at the intersection of 63rd, most likely. So by putting their traffic onto 63rd Place, that does increase the traffic on 63rd. It's not enough to warrant a signal now, but that doesn't mean it wouldn't warrant one in the future.
Okay, thank you. That's, she answered my question on that.
Thank you, sir.
What about the emergency? Was that just an agreement that you just kept that permanent closed? You couldn't have two entrances open the whole time? Is that Jenny, or maybe Jenny knows?
Jenny, that's the question that Jenny answered, yeah.
Well, but is it because of the relationship with Kelly Trucking and that private, that's kind of a private road, so they wouldn't let us use it full-time or let the development use it full-time?
That's correct.
That's correct.
The emergency access is allowed there with an agreement with Kelly Trucking, but it was not allowed for a permanent access point.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I didn't catch that if you said that. Thank you, Jenny.
Yep.
Okay, so I think I hit the traffic questions. Maybe staff, there was some discussion around, you know, concerns around fire and having a fire there and how it would react. Could you maybe share with me, I believe the fire district reviews these plans? Do they look into those matters of height and sprinklers? They probably do, but I know we have building codes, but I also want to know, did the fire district also sign off on this proposal?
So they did review this proposal. You know, we are only at the conditional use phase, so that we do not have a fully developed site plan. But in their initial review, they were okay with the access as shown with the emergency access.
Okay. And then the last question, this probably helps with a lot of the, kind of all the developments in the area, measuring the height. You know, there's always been confusion of where do you measure the height of a building? Maybe in this particular one, are you measuring it from the west side or the east side of the building along McIntyre? Are you measuring it off of 63rd? Can you maybe, Rob, share with us, where do you, where does the, what is it, 45-foot limit is measured from which road?
Sure. So it's actually measured from the high point on the property, so the highest point where the building is located on the property. So that height could be 45 feet. And then there is a slight grade to the property, which allows for slightly higher heights as you get towards McIntyre Parkway. But per our regulations, the height is measured at the high point, which would be on that, essentially on the west side of the building.
High point, but where's the, where do you measure from? So that would be from the lowest point on the property or the main arterial road or the residential road? I thought there was a way that you measure from what base?
Sure. So it's from, it's from the point at the building where you've got the highest grade. So as it moves through the parking lot and you're at the east base of So as it moves through the parking lot and you're at the east base of the three, four-story building, it's measured from the highest, the high point on the, so what would be the high point on the west side of the building.
So it's actually measured on the west side of the property up?
Just on the west side of the building, not all the way to the property line because there's still some additional grade there. It's actually just measured at the building foundation on the highest side.
So that's really on the three-story side, right? And so that's where you're getting that 30, I think it was 38 feet in the report?
Correct.
Okay. And do you know that by any chance the height of what it looks from the east side of the building? Sorry, my computer's dead. I don't have access to all that stuff now.
It's okay. It is about 47, 48 feet.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much, Rob, and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Your Honor. Let me just follow up with a couple of traffic questions as well. So, and this is probably for Jenny. As we look at the warrants, could a light be put in regardless of the warrant? Could we just say, no, we're going to put a light in? I see the mayor shaking his, I'm just asking. Maybe this is a rhetorical question, but I just want the expert to answer.
We typically would not do that. It would hinder traffic more than it would help traffic.
Okay. And then what warrants, and I don't know if you can speak to this, but what warrants would need to be met to install a traffic light?
Typically, the warrants would need to include some additional traffic from the side streets coming onto McIntyre Parkway. I think Curtis Rowe is the traffic engineer for the developer on this project, and he looks specifically at several of the warrants. He might be able to speak to those more specifically?
Yes, happy to do so. I've done a lot of signal warrant studies. There are actually eight warrants, and you only have to meet one of the eight to warrant a traffic signal at any intersection. But you do have to meet one of those eight warrants. Three of them are traffic volume related. The three traffic volume ones are the eight-hour, in which you have to have a high enough volume on the side street approach over eight hours of a day compared with the volume on McIntyre.
So can I interrupt you before you go to the next one? So based, obviously, the side traffic streets, those are pretty well-built out. So the likelihood of that warrant being met is not probable, based on traffic?
Correct. And residential almost always never meets the eight-hour warrant because it generates traffic in spurts. You know, the morning peak hour specifically is when most of the people are leaving, going to their, going to work. And so, you know, that's only one or two hours in the morning that you have the highest volume and then it dies down for a big portion of the day and then people return, you know, after they come back from school and work. And so then it increases again. And so the eight-hour warrant is hardly ever warranted for residential traffic developments.
Okay. Can you share with us some other, maybe the seven others?
So then the second warrant is a four-hour warrant. And so those, to meet the four-hour warrant, the traffic volumes increase. And so like the eight-hour warrant, we would need 80 approach vehicles on the side street over eight hours. To meet a four-hour warrant, we would need 100 vehicles per hour on the minor street approaches of any four hours of the day. And so it's less hours, but it's a higher threshold.
Okay.
And to put it in perspective, the minor street approach that we have here is roughly around 30 to 40 vehicles per hour with the development. And you just take the higher of either side of 63rd Approach. And so you can tell from that 100 number, you know, we're about 30% of the way there. So we're quite a ways away from meeting that one.
Okay. So what other warrants are there?
Okay, so then I'll go through these quicker. So then the third warrant is the peak hour. And so those are only applied in unusual circumstances when you have an employer that has a lot of employees and they disperse a lot of traffic all at once and people can't get out if you didn't have a signal there. So that's a peak hour warrant. And then the other five are non-vehicle related. There is a pedestrian crossing warrant, which you need 200 pedestrians crossing in the peak hour to warrant that. There's school crossing, and so if you have school kids crossing a street, then that threshold is quite a bit lower. It's like 30 students, 30 kids crossing the street at any time. There's a warrant based upon signal progression. There's a warrant for railroad crossing preemption. And there's a warrant based upon crash data.
Crash data. So really, there's only maybe two warrants that this intersection might be able to cross the threshold, and that would be crash data, unfortunately, and child, or the children crossing.
Correct. Yep, or school crossing. Those would be the two, yep. And the accident data, the crash history, to warrant a signal, you would need five crashes in a 12-month time period that are susceptible to correction by the installation of a traffic signal. So that means angle collisions from left-turning vehicles are the ones that need to be there. Unfortunately, the way that the warrants are set, it's reactive. It's not proactive. And so, you know, those conditions have to be in place prior to warranting a traffic signal. And as Jenny mentioned, otherwise putting signals everywhere would do much more harm than good.
Yep. No, and that, I mean, that's helpful. And because obviously, you know, I think for me, the easy answer is we'll just put a light in. But there's obviously, there's thresholds or hurdles we have to clear in order for that to happen. And are those warrants, is that a state, Colorado traffic? How are those warrants, where are those warrants issued from?
So it's a national U.S. Department of Transportation, FHWA. It's out of the manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. And so that document is used by states, every state in the country. And it's to ensure uniformity of traffic control devices across the country.
So you didn't just arbitrarily say, we don't need a light here?
No, that's correct. Yep, follow the rules.
All right. I thank you for that, and that's good education for me as well. This is, and I don't, this is a question for the developer. You'd indicated that you'd be willing to work with the city on kind of that crossing. Does that mean, when you say work with them, does that mean maybe help pay for it? Whatever crossing signals may be proposed or installed? Or are you just thinking about the engineering of that?
No, certainly. I'll contribute Curtis' time, certainly for that, as well as contribution. I think one of those push-button flashing crossers, I think is a fine idea. And that's something we'd be happy to contribute with.
Okay. I appreciate that. And then, so going back to our traffic folks, I know that we've just gone through a study in Old Town or some areas in Old Town with different types of crossing mechanisms and street, things on the street. Is there any, is there anything that we could potentially use here in this crossing that's new and improved or better than what is currently there today?
So in our evaluations of this intersection, it's significantly different than the traffic patterns in Old Town Arvada. A lot of the things you see in Old Town Arvada are traffic calming measures to slow vehicles down prior to reaching pedestrian movements because there's quite a bit of traffic, pedestrian foot traffic in that area and moving in different directions. Here, we're looking at more of one crosswalk where we would expect pedestrians to move. And the push-button kind of flasher is the best alternative. We've looked at other things to do in this area, and we feel that that's probably the best alternative for this location.
So probably something that was in, like, that was installed by Westwoods Elementary, that style of flasher?
Yes.
Okay, that helps. Now I've got some questions for the developer. In the loading area, obviously, that's food deliveries, truck deliveries, or I'm sorry, trash, linens, whatever it may be. It's all coming to that one centralized location?
Yep, that's how we have it laid out today, sir.
Is there, is there a particular, are, is that traffic just coming in and out throughout the day? Or is there a prescribed time for those deliveries to happen?
We will make sure there's a prescribed time for those trucks to show up. So mostly, it's the typical trash truck that you would have come to a development of this nature. And for this type of development, we anticipate one, maybe two trips per week?
For trash?
For trash, yes. And then as far as delivery of, you know, food and things of that nature, I expect that there'll be two to three other deliveries per week for food and for, you know, serve that full kitchen.
Okay. And then on the south side of the property, where the parking lot kind of extends out past the four-story side of the building, what kind of landscape and buffer is there to buffer between, you know, headlights and the townhomes directly across McIntyre?
We've not finalized our landscape plan yet, but we'd be happy to extend landscaping along that southern, southeastern property line so as to buffer any headlights from spilling over onto the east side of the property.
Some sort of hedge or something that would block traffic or headlights?
Certainly, happy to do that.
The Kelly Trucking questions were answered. Quick question on the posting log and the address. There was testimony that the address was posted incorrectly. Can we just verify that that was not the case?
So I can address that. So when you log into our online track-it system for submitting applications, you have to pick an address in order to be able to submit an application. This is a vacant piece of property and does not have an address. So I believe they just picked the closest location for, to get it into our track-it system. But all the notices only refer to it as the southwest corner of 63rd and McIntyre. And so the notice was based on this location and not the address that was in the track-it system.
And so that would have been posted with a sign on the property as well as posted in the newspaper following all of the same posting log requirements?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you. Just a couple of more questions, I think. Well, I'll pause for other council members to ask questions, but I may have a couple of others. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pfeifer, I understand you've got your light on?
Yeah, sorry. Thank you for the second bite. I forgot one thing. Does this zoning restrict independent living? So in other words, only assisted in memory will be there and they can never change that to independent, independent living, right? Because then it becomes residential, doesn't it become commercial?
That's correct. If it was fully independent, that would not be allowed because we would consider that a residential project.
But even if they say 20 of the units are going to be independent living, they can't do that, right?
Correct. The way we wrote the definition of a continuing care facility, it is a, it is a assisted memory care and kind of a nursing home situation, not independent.
Okay, thank you. That was my one I forgot. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Board?
This is just sort of a general question for you. Eric, with COVID, do you see any effects from this pandemic on the marketability of large facilities in the future?
Actually, the contrary. What we're seeing is that mostly the COVID's affecting nursing care-type facilities much more than assisted living and a memory care-type facility. We're seeing that, and I could have, if Jeffrey's still available, I can have him speak to that more than I. But we're seeing that adult children are interested in putting their parents into a facility that is protected so that they are actually housed in a facility where they don't need to go out and get groceries or they don't need to leave the facility. Everything is brought to them. So we're actually seeing the opposite.
Yeah, and I can speak to that, ma'am, if you'd like. Just really quick. I will tell you, just from a, from an industry-wide, and I'm in contact with colleagues around the country, April, April business just fell off a cliff. But in July, we had the highest move-in month since January. So the need for senior living and us being a solution for seniors and their families is there and people are understanding the safety protocols that we're taking and that we have in place and that we are a good solution. So hopefully that answers your question.
Okay, thank you. And then I have one other question for Jenny and also the traffic engineer. I want to ask you if you've personally walked across the street on McIntyre? Both of you? Have you personally walked across McIntyre?
I can answer that first. I've been to that intersection. You know, we did the study of it and drove through it. I did not personally walk across it, no.
Jenny, have you personally walked across it?
I have personally walked across it. I happen to live about a half a mile from this site, so I have walked it. I don't walk it frequently, but I have crossed the street there.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, do we have any other council questions?
Councilmember Jones.
Mr. Jones.
Just one follow-up question. If, from a conditional use perspective, if a hospital were to, because it listed on kind of the list or the traffic study, if a hospital were to come and have, or want to build a hospital there, would they have to apply for the same conditional use permit? Or could that be a use by right?
That is a use by right within the general commercial zone.
So a hospital could come in and build 120,000-square-foot hospital? And that really could be approved administratively?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't see any other lights.
Okay, I'll open it up for a motion.
Councilmember Marion.
Mr. Marion.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that the Cherrywood Point Senior Living Conditional Use Permit, located at the southwest corner of McIntyre Parkway and 63rd Avenue, be approved. This motion is based on the findings of fact adopted by the Planning Commission. And I'd like to speak to this motion quickly, if I may. So a couple of comments I would make. The question here with this conditional use permit for us is, is this use appropriate here? Is this use suitable on this piece of property the way it's situated? And when I look at this potential use, I see a lot of things that are very positive about it. Certainly, the low amount of in-and-out traffic compared to any other use. I can picture a large 24-hour fitness if those ever are able to get back in operation would have significantly more traffic. Or if we ever get lucky enough to have a Trader Joe's built somewhere, that site like this, you know, a Trader Joe's would generate a lot of traffic. An In-N-Out Burger, one of my favorites, would generate a lot of traffic. And I see that is probably the biggest impact to those who are residents who are very, very close by. And so I think, to me, this particular use seems to be very appropriate. It is an interesting mix of residential versus commercial. And I think we were intentional when we chose that an assisted living situation was a commercial use and not a residential use. I don't think, you know, that wasn't by accident, and I think those do operate as commercial. So again, I think this fits in. I believe also this could have been developed under our old processes of PUD. And I think would have, we would as a council be looking at more features or more parts of this development and not just the conditional use. But I believe, you know, that this doesn't allow anything that, or this new land development designation doesn't allow anything that wouldn't have been allowed before. There are a couple of, a couple of, I think, issues here. I think the, you know, the traffic on McIntyre is certainly an issue. But I think that's a much broader issue. That's not due to this development. I believe through the testimony we've seen tonight, this development provides very little traffic, additional traffic onto McIntyre. And I think the pedestrian crossing on McIntyre probably is a problem, and I believe that's a problem for the city to solve. a problem for the city to solve. And, you know, maybe this development being the catalyst for having that happen is a good, is a good thing. I think there is one nice improvement for the residents to the west here, and that's the detached sidewalk along West 63rd that this development will bring. And so, so I think there are, you know, that's a positive as well. So, you know, when I look at this particular conditional use, I look at it as, as I don't have any doubts that this use is appropriate on this property. I think it meets all the, all the factors that make it appropriate on this property. And I think the residents who are opposed to this, I think they have legitimate reasons to be concerned. I think they have legitimate observations about this. And my encouragement to the city staff is, is that as you proceed forward administratively, if this conditional use permit were to pass, that you keep in mind and remember the comments that the residents on both sides of this have made, because again, I do believe they have some legitimate concerns and observations. So for all those reasons, very long way of saying I will be voting yes on this motion.
Very good. Any other council members wish to make a comment?
Councilmember Jones.
Jones.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is, this is a tough one for sure, for all of the reasons that we've heard tonight. And, you know, I, obviously, we all received lots of emails and your testimony tonight. And as I've looked at this and I've looked at the property, and I've, I've been fortunate to live in, on that side of town for the last 20 years, and I've seen this develop. And I actually remember driving down Old McIntyre Road when those were all farms and none of that was out there. And so I've seen it develop over my lifetime, growing up in Arvada. And it's, it's always hard when there's, you know, something coming in that, that creates angst. And I would agree with Mr. Marriott that my hope is that as, you know, staff goes through the process, if this were to pass, that your concerns are taken into consideration with the developer. The, you know, as I read a lot of the emails, some of the comments were speaking to the violation of Criteria Four and Criteria Six. And I don't necessarily view this conditional use permit as a violation of those criteria. Those criteria are meant for us as a council to use in our consideration as we look at projects like this, especially in this case with this conditional use permit being, as Mr. Marriott noted, the right use for the land. And so I, you know, outside of, outside of that, I can't find any reason why this would violate or be in, or object to the fact that it does meet the criteria as presented in the packet. And so I also will be voting yes for this conditional use permit.
Ms. Board?
Well, this is a difficult project to look at. And I too have visited the site, and I did get a chance actually to talk to some of the neighbors. I actually crossed the street several times that morning at about 10:30 in the morning, when one would expect traffic not to be all that great. And frankly, I was very concerned about the street. If I were a resident there, I would be terrified to have to cross that street all the time. It's a four-lane highway. Cars are going fast. What really made me panic was actually when they stopped for me to walk across the street. Because all I could imagine was all these cars piling up behind and hitting people from the back. So I would really encourage the city to look at it and not be so darn stuck on rules and numbers, but a little common sense sometimes helps. Because there's a curve there when you're crossing from east to west, there's very poor visibility there. Cars are going fast, they're going to continue going fast. And unless we have a lot of resources to park officers there, which I know we don't, I do believe someone's going to get hurt, to be honest. And so I look at that street compared to a street that I cross, which is only a two-lane street, and it's a neighborhood street. And even that sometimes gets pretty darn crazy with people speeding. So for the sake of the neighbors, I would say that we definitely need to put something in there and put it in quickly. But I, I really have no, nothing to find fault with this project. The only thing that I find fault with is with a variable that I really can't come against it, and that is the height. It's unfortunate that we're putting tall buildings when there's such a gorgeous view that we just don't see in many places. I mean, there are a lot of beautiful views in Colorado, but as far as Arvada, that's an absolutely fantastic view. So I, I understand the neighbors' complaints, and I feel for you, because you are losing a beautiful view, but I can't vote on that. That's the problem for me. I can't vote on that solely. So it is a good product. We do need it. We have aging population, and we do have a lot of people with Alzheimer's and other mental issues. And I think I, it is a need that we really do have here in Arvada with our high older population. So I'm going to vote for it, but I, I, I understand your feelings because I'm not a lover of density myself.
Simpson?
Thank you. So echoing sort of what my many colleagues have said, we have these conditional use parameters that we must consider within, is this an appropriate use for this land or not? I absolutely understand where the residents are coming on, coming from. I have significant concerns with the height particularly of this building, particularly with at grade, Mr., Rob, I'm so sorry, I can't pronounce your last name. I'm so sorry. Said at 48 feet at one point with grades, so that concerns me a lot. I would like that to be brought down if it is at all possible. In terms of the, the traffic, I don't see this building adding much in terms of traffic use. Very, very few, if any, of these residents will drive because the employees will be in shifts. We're looking at maybe 20 or 30 employees at a particular time. That's not a great amount of volume that we're looking at. I am grateful to the developer for taking up some of the HOA recommendations, such as moving the sign there on 63rd, that's important. And with my primary concern crossing McIntyre, the flashing crossing is extremely important. So for me, that was going to be my big concern on number six. And that, with that addition, that mitigates the biggest adverse impact that I can see. So with noting that I would like for staff to work strongly with the HOAs, particularly with the aesthetic design, we've had several residents testify that it just doesn't fit with the community. Maybe we can get those facades just a little bit more cohesive into what the surrounding community already looks like so that it looks like it fits and is a part of this community and adds to this community. So with that said, I will vote yes, but re-echoing my concerns about the height.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yeah, I, thank you, Mayor. There's really two issues if I, if I go through the concerns from the neighbors and the citizens. It's height and traffic. But the way that the traffic arguments were presented, there's traffic itself and there's traffic from the development. And you have to further divide that down, and you cannot associate, in my eyes, you cannot associate overall traffic issues in and out of McIntyre that originates and terminates in all parts of the city and, and put that on the burden of the developer. So I had to weed through that to, to really objectively add our criteria. I do want to acknowledge that, yeah, that's an interesting curve, and pedestrian safety is very important, and I'm sure our team will look into that and do the best. Not that I'm a traffic engineer, but I'll throw in two cents. A safe harbor, a little spot in the middle might be good, and that might solve all of it. But if we can have somewhere that citizens can stand in the middle as they cross halfway through would be nice. But I can't say that this assisted living, memory care will generate enough traffic to warrant that much traffic concerns. So then you look at the height. Well, in this area, it's been zoned as general commercial. And even under our other codes, it pretty much fits within our height of 38 feet is within our code, just like Rob said earlier in the meeting, it's how it's measured. And I wanted to make sure we were all clear of how it was measured and where it was measured from as we look at height. As far as how it looks, I did go by the property. I didn't go with this group. I went by myself over the weekend and, and try to imagine what this would look like. What I appreciate about the development is typically what could happen is they would have put the, the three stories, it could have been three stories, they would have put that closest to the west side and put all the parking in the front towards McIntyre. And, and that would have been more of a concern for me than how it's flipped now. I'd rather have the height on the street and taper down as low as possible towards the residents, because we've learned and I've seen it, it gets flipped around and next thing you know, you'll have a wall in your backyard, and you would be even more upset than the idea that you have 100 feet between the property line and the, or the properties of the residential and the building. So for the way it was designed and the way it came around, I think it, it fits very nicely for what it's zoned for and how it, how it adapted. As far as cause, how, how it looks, the cosmetics of it, I think it actually matches the King Super Shopping Center. They all have those peaks, they all have that design. It, it actually matches the rest of the commercial district in that area. So I think it does blend in. And also, I mean, we're lucky to have this discussion, but if there's a right of use, you know, somebody else comes in, like a hospital, or I think Mr. Marriott said, In-N-Out Burger or whatever, that's a whole different impact that, we've dealt with a lot of these assisted living and retirement homes and so forth, and the traffic is not nearly as what you might think. I could think about a dozen retirement homes throughout the city that we've approved in my nine years, and they have not generated nearly the traffic that was anticipated. But if you put a Dutch Brothers, yeah, that's a lot of traffic. Or a Starbucks, that's a lot of traffic. And if we want to worry about traffic, then those, those companies could have come in, just plopped it down, and we would, we would not have a public hearing right now. We would just be moving forward. So having the pleasure of having this discussion and, and seeing the development, and, and I think the team here has heard all of our comments and concerns, so they'll, they'll, they'll do the best they can to get those addressed. And I think that the developer has heard our comments. I feel comfortable in supporting your, your development proposal. Thank you, Mayor.
I don't see any other.
Anyone else on council wish to address? Me?
Nope.
Okay, I'll make some closing comments then. While I'm sure that the applicant has been concerned about my criticism in his presentation style, I've got to look at this project from, you know, a more reasoned approach than just not being happy with that aspect of it. You know, one of the issues that has been raised is whether or not we gave adequate notice. I can tell you by the number of emails we received that this community and these communities were well aware of this project. So I think that there's no question that adequate notice has been given. I would suggest that in the future, that instead of sending a form email, as many did, that that loses its effectiveness. For someone who's been in this community for a long, long time, there was always talk that McIntyre was going to become the de facto bellway. And I don't think that there's any better evidence than the testimony tonight that citizens in West Arvada ought to get on board with completing the Parkway, Jefferson Parkway, so that this does not become the de facto bellway. So talk to your friends in Broomfield, because we need to complete the Jefferson Parkway to get traffic moved off of McIntyre onto where it should be on the Jefferson Parkway. This project will generate less traffic than virtually any other use that might happen. And so we cannot criticize this project on the issue of traffic. And the height that is discussed here, I agree with my compatriots that it's consistent with what is permitted in the site and that having the, the height on this side versus the west side, which could have, in effect, been higher because you measured from the ground level at that point, I appreciate what the developer has done in that regard. And I agree with Mr. Pfeiffer that the architecture of this fits in very nicely. I live less than five minutes from this. So I drive it all the time, and I think it's an appropriate use, so I will be supporting my own. So if council will vote?
All members on the dais have a vote, Your Honor. If you'd like to cast your vote before I display these votes.
I will vote yes.
And that passes seven to zero.
Thank you. concludes this public hearing. I note that the time is 10:46. Ms. Morris, what steps do we need to take to be able to do the last public hearing for tonight?
At this point, if we anticipate that the city council meeting will proceed past 11:30, then at 11, you have to take steps to extend the meeting time.
Okay, well, first of all, is Mr. Lovridge in chambers? Because that would be the main reason why it might go past 11:30.
No. No, he's not here.
Let's get you up.
What's the sense from the applicant and everybody? Think we can wrap this up by 11:30?
This is Linda Hoover with staff. I think we can do it pretty darn quick.
Okay, let's proceed. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I believe Rob will again introduce this item.
First of all, let me, let me open the public hearing so that Ms. Miller can tap her gavel. This is the major modifications for the Arvada Fire Station Number Three rebuild generally located at 7300 Kipling Street.
Yes, Rob?
Yes, I will make this as quick as I can. The applicant is requesting five major modifications as part of this application, and that is due to the fact that this is a fairly small site and the redevelopment for a new fire station where an existing one currently exists. Those five modifications include an increase in maximum lot coverage, reduced building transparency along streets, reduced setback, reduced front setback, reduced setback for trash enclosure, and elimination of a solid fence along the eastern property line in order to preserve some existing trees. There is a site plan that has been provided, a conceptual site plan that's been provided as part of this application, and we have given it a general lookover, and staff does support the requested modifications, given the need for a facility at this location. The Planning Commission did unanimously recommend approval of the major modifications at their July 21st meeting. We have received the signed posting log and mailing affidavit, and they are in order. The applicant is here for a presentation, and Linda Hoover is also here if you have any questions for staff.
Thank you. Posting log and mailing affidavit will be made part of the record. And Ms. Simpson has requested to reserve the motion. With that, the applicant, is there anyone that wishes to testify on this matter? If you'll raise your right hand. Swear affirm that the testimony given these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I know.
Very good. So let's hear from the applicant.
My name is Brad Bonnet. I'm with All Redden Associates. We're the architectural firm of record. Our address is 580 Burbank Street in Broomfield, Colorado. The slide you have in front of you right now is the current Arvada Fire Station Three, which was built in 1962. The current size of that station is about a 3,700 square-foot fire station, which has been outdated due to the current needs and demands of the district. And so we're now proposing a larger station be built on this site. If you go to the next slide, the first major modification that we're looking at is lot coverage. You can go to the next slide. The maximum lot coverage for non-residential buildings in this zone is 25%. This site is only .48 acres, so it's an extremely small site. Arvada is requesting to construct a larger facility for living quarters for six firefighters. Arvada is requesting to construct a larger facility for living quarters for six firefighters and the apparatus bay is increased inside just to the current demands of emergency vehicles at this time. What we're showing in green is just simply the landscaping, but the dash line is the property line and then if you want to call it the peach is the size of the current fire station. So the increased size and the lot coverage for this facility is 38.2%. Next slide. One of the next major modification is architectural transparency. If you go to the next slide. The slide on the bottom is the front of the building, which faces south on 73rd. We meet the architectural transparency for that side of the building. The image up above is facing west or Kipling. As you'll recall, on Kipling, there's some large site retaining walls, which extend from the left to the right of the imagery. So a large percentage of the architectural transparency, be doing two and 10 feet, is not visible from Kipling. If you go to the next slide. What we're looking at is the image on the bottom, left-hand side. You can see that we're going to propose and will discuss further a screen wall down low along with the screen wall that's currently in place along Kipling. So much of that architectural transparency is not visible. We worked with staff and we came up with a good way to allow that architectural transparency to be visible and that's with the linear windows up above. And by doing this, we've taken that transparency up over 50%. So if you go to the next slide, we're looking at the image on the bottom right, right-hand side. You would have to literally be standing on the wall of Kipling, looking down into the site to even see this point of view. Next slide, please. The next modification that we're talking about would be parking. Parking setbacks for this modification are required to be 30 feet from the setback. So if you go to the next slide, this is the current building and the parking, as you can see, not very well delineated in terms of striping and it's a sea of concrete parking lot. Next slide, please. The dashed red line shows the 30-foot setback that's required by the current code off of 73rd Place as well as off of Kipling, a very restrictive this would be. So we're trying to work with staff and allow some planting strips, some additional planting strips along 73rd, as well as we're doing planting strips in the right-of-way of Kipling Street, denoted by the green area to offset this requirement for the 30-foot setback parking. If you would go to the next slide, please. The next proposed modification is trash container setbacks. The current code requires the setbacks to be 20 feet from streets and sidewalks. If you go to the next slide, this is the current trash container and how it sits on the site, as you can see, it's not enclosed and it also gives you a better understanding of the large site walls on Kipling that extend from the north midway through the proposed current building. Next slide, please. What we're proposing is that on the bottom left, that screen wall there not only includes the trash enclosure, but it screens the emergency generator, their fueling station and the transformer to contextually give it more of a linear look. Next slide, please. And so the red line is showing what we currently looked at with the proposed screen wall. The dashed red line is what the setback requirement is for the trash container and working with staff, we feel that the continuity of the proposed screen wall is a good alternate solution. If we could go to the next slide, please. The last major modification that we're looking for is the landscape buffer. There's a multitude of ways to approach this. If you go to the next slide, we're looking not only at the north side of the site denoted in the red line, but also the red line on the east side of the site, denoted with the red line. Next slide, please. The imagery here is looking northeast. This is the current fence that's on the north property line, that's on the neighbor's property. We're proposing to maintain this current fence, which is a wrought iron open fence. And so if you go to the next slide, it gives you an overall view of that fence. You can see how much higher the current neighbor's property is up and above the proposed fire station and that retaining wall that the proposed fence sit on is also on the neighbor's property. So as we said, we're looking to maintain this current fence. If you go to the next slide. And then this would be the view down the east property line. You can see the dilapidated chain link fence. We would remove the chain link fence and continue the north property wrought iron fence along the east property line. As you'll notice, we look at further slides, there's current existing large trees that the neighbor wants to maintain that are either extending over into the district's property or the current tree line of these trees are right up against the dilapidated fence. Next slide, please. This is kind of a better image showing what's taking place along there. So obviously, we're trying to avoid killing these trees by doing anything within the drip line and the district has maintained or had discussions with this owner and they would prefer the open fence look to maintain their view corridor and based on the existing trees, they are open and an approval of maintaining the new wrought iron fence along the east property line. Next slide, please. So that's the basis of the five modifications that the district is seeking approval from, from city council today. We appreciate your time and if you have any questions, we look forward to hearing them.
Now that's how you make a presentation.
Thank you, sir.
I'll open it up for public comment. Are there any members of the public that wish to testify on this matter?
I'm sorry, there are not.
Thank you very much. I'll close the public testimony portion, open it up for city council questions or action.
We have council members Marriott and Pfeiffer.
Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just have a very quick question for Brad Bonnet. The only observation I see is that there's about eight parking spaces here at this fire station. What do they do operationally during shift change when you have potentially six firefighters leaving and six firefighters who showed up before the first six could leave and for a very short time? There needs to be a place for probably 12 vehicles, but there's only eight.
Division Chief Ferry, you want to approach that?
Yes, I will. Mr. Mayor and council, shift change is something that evolves. It does, there is a pass off where the outgoing firefighters have to be relieved by the oncoming. It's something that we can manage. We manage quite well and it actually doesn't happen at any specific time. More so, it evolves over the course of 30 to 40 minutes of time. So we can stagger the shift change and we feel we can manage it well, the restricted parking spaces. And if need be, we can manage and maintain our response during that time if there is any conflicts with the parking areas that exist.
Thank you.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
This question's for Division Chief Ferry. Why did we change the design of the firehouse? Just curious. Did you catch that?
Could you clarify your question? Change the design?
Well, because all of the other firehouses, for the most part, the newer ones are all of that architecture and this one looks very much like West Metro. So just curious why we decided to change a design that reflects another fire district?
Actually, the design was changed not to reflect anybody else's stations or design features. It was designed, or this particular design was made to fit in with the neighborhood. When we started to plan out this site and look at it, one of the things we wanted to do is we wanted it to fit in with the neighboring property and the older characteristics of Kipling Heights. And so we felt that a traditional fire station design from, you know, the mid-1900s, 1960s era would fit well in the neighborhood and that's why we went with this design and the flat roof features.
And are the garages and everything all going to be glass? So natural light can get in for the firefighters? Are they going to be opaque or?
We're still working through some of that. We do need to make sure that we meet the transparency requirements. So as it's shown now, the front bay doors will be all glass. There is a possibility we'll have the lower panel be a solid panel on those bay doors. But we do want light to come into the bays. We don't want it to be a dark dungeon either, so there will be quite a bit of transparency on that front side.
Yeah, because today, I think that that firehouse is kind of dark for the firefighters and it's kind of nestled with all those trees and walls and anything to improve the environment for those firefighters would be good. But it kind of was driven from my questions around the architecture and the design change that, I don't know, maybe I should have looked further in. I didn't look at the designs, but it caught me off guard. So, looks nice, just different.
Okay, any other council questions?
I don't see any.
Ms. Simpson, you've reserved the motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that DA 2020-0051, Major Modifications for the Arvada Fire Station Number Three Rebuild, Generally Located at 7300 Kipling Street, be approved. This motion is based on the finding of facts adopted by the Planning Commission.
Is there any council comment on the motion?
We have council members Marriott, Jones and Pfeiffer.
Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. This very, very quickly here. I really like this proposal and I particularly like this fire station staying here. I think it's, I will note that even when this station is built to cover more of this lot, it'll be handling the same amount of calls as it's handling today. So I believe, you know, things have changed in what our expectations are out of our fire department and they need appropriate facilities to do that out of and I'll give them credit for reusing this site and being efficient in that way. I grew up very close to this fire station. It's always been a very integral part of the neighborhood and I believe this change will make it that way for 50 more years and that's a, I see that as a really good thing.
Ms. Jones?
Yeah, I just want to compliment the fire district for reusing this site. You know, again, I know that there were lots of conversations about where and, you know, how does that station, you know, serve that part of the community? I really liked the design. I guess I didn't know what West Metro looked like, which is probably not a bad thing, but I think it is a great design. I think it will fit well into the community and quite honestly, it's something that, as Mr. Marriott said, will be a kind of a beacon of the service that will be provided to that area for many years to come. So thank you and I will obviously be supporting this.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
And I'll echo, obviously, what they've said as well. The only ask I'd have is, well, actually, the design is really traditional and it looks really cool and I think it kind of reflects the heritage of firefighting. Curious what Candace will look like when that point gets there. So I'll be supporting it as well and thank you for the fire district of reusing that property and keeping it there. I think that was a great idea.
Ms. Simpson?
Thank you. I just wanted to echo my colleagues. I'm very pleased that the fire board kept this in District Two at that location. I think it's important for the community and that part of town and also for the design, working with the neighbors on the fence, making sure everything was done and that everyone was happy. So kudos to them and also just yay firefighters, you guys rock. Thank you for everything you do for us.
Right. Okay, there be no other comments?
We have Councilmember Ford request to speak.
Ms. Ford, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, Mayor. This is just sort of a tongue in cheek. I just was wondering if there was any possibility if we could get some activity in the old fire station number seven instead of being just a building and nothing happening there. So, anyway.
Okay, very good. If council will vote?
All members of council have voted, Your Honor. If you would like to say your vote before we display our votes.
I will vote yes.
And that passes seven to zero.
Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes our public hearings. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to address city council at this time?
There is not.
Thank you. Is there any, are there any reports from city council?
No, this Bob.
Yes, Mr. Pfeiffer.
Lauren said yay firefighters in front of three police officers?
Apologies, officers, I meant no offense. Thank you for everything you do as well.
Okay, there you go.
Also, Councilmember Jones wishes to speak.
Ms. Jones?
Mr. Mayor, I have just two things I want to talk about. First is CDPHE has come back with their results and recommendations on the soil sample that was taken in the Jefferson Parkway right-of-way and have given a presentation to the Board of County Commissioners as well as several others, tongue twister. And they have given the unequivocal green light to proceed and they have no concerns about the particles that, the particle that was found or any others that were taken in the test area. We're working with CDPHE right now to have them do the same presentation for council and the public. Not sure when that will happen yet, but Mr. Devon is working on that with Mr. Ray, the director, executive director for the Parkway. So that's a great, great information and again, we appreciate CDPHE's guidance on this and we look forward to seeing that presentation. The second thing, I just want to give a little bit of a shout out to Kristen Rush as well as all of our city team. But Kristen is kind of the backbone to the city council and she answered a question for a constituent that I had and this was the remark from the constituent. Kristen, thank you so much for your detailed answer. It will be very useful in my conversations with others about the impacts of the past that they are considering. He says, he goes on to say, "I'm consistently impressed by the quality of responses and services I receive from the city personnel at all levels. I am consistently treated like an important customer of a service company which must compete for their clientele. Thank you for reinforcing that impression." Thank you, Kristen, and thank you to the city team. Mr. Devon, if you can pass that along to everybody else. And I'm glad that the police are here. Yay, yay, police.
Okay, any other council reports?
No, Your Honor.
I want to thank the city team for making it possible for me to participate from Breckenridge without having to drive back to Denver, which would have put me back up here very, very late tonight. Although I am a little concerned, I sort of feel like the Wizard of Oz when you see the screen with the big face of the mayor. I always wonder about the man behind the curtain. So, but anyway, thanks to the team for putting this together and again, exemplary work and I do appreciate the comments from the applicant that we really did do a great job here at the city of Arvada, keeping the citizens' work moving forward during some pretty tough times. And I think we are a case study for many country of how to do it right. Mr. Devon?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, next week, we will have a workshop on building and fire code update and sub-area planning efforts, so we'll see everyone next Monday.
Ms. Morris, do you have anything from the city attorney's office?
I do not. Thank you, Your Honor.
Ms. Miller, will you gavel us closed? We stand adjourned.